Approval of regular town council meeting minutes, May 11th, 2015. Approval of executive session meeting minutes, May 11th, 2015. Approval of special meeting minutes, May 4th, 2015. Approval of regular town council meeting minutes, April 13th, 2015. Receipts emerged from the filing boards and commissions. The Arts Council, Open Space and Land Preservation Commission, Prevention Coalition, and the Zoning Board of Review. Correspondence received and filed. Exodus West Greenwich Regional School District Resolution supporting legislation on gun-free schools. New Park Gulls baseball team early night, Monday, June 15th invitation for councilors to throw out the first pitch. Inter-local trust seminar relative to OPEC funding program. Town administrators' letter to Governor Ramondo regarding Tiburon Stonebridge rehab project. Treasurer Denis Solak revenue and expenditure plots for April 2015. Christopher Arujal, 62 Russell Drive, request to amend parking ban on left side. Side of Russell Drive referred to police chief. Schedule of public hearing on June 29th for comprehensive plan amendments and zoning map and text amendments with planning board recommendation relative to Tiburon Crossing, AKA Tiburon Glen, as submitted by the Carpionado Group LLC. Plot 110, Lot 102, Plot 301, Lot 221. Approval of tax disaster abatements, Tiburon Lake Water District Distribution, a Phase 1 sewer expansion project informational packet. Town administrative council authority to sign the participation agreement with prison. Any councilors would like to take anything off the consent agenda?
I would like to take CA 7, please.
Madam Chair, would I be able to be heard on that?
No. Not right, not anyway. Anything else?
Madam President, CA 4. And CA 6.
Anything else? Any other items?
Sorry, we will let me approve the consent agenda, save those items.
Second. Must remain second, all those in favor. CA 4. Town administrators' letter to Governor Ramondo regarding Tiburon Stonebridge rehab project.
I'd just like to find out if there's a response from the governor.
Not yet. My employees have this immediately in front of them, so explain that the project has been delayed. The construction season that they intend to begin this project would be notified as a town, it'll be next year, not this year. So the, my immediate response was to ask the governor why that would be. They received every single assurance throughout this entire process. But the last time they dragged me up there and went to Columbia in January and said, "This is so bad, we have to do this right away, so we're going to speed this up." And now the town is that they're delayed. So my reaction was to ask the governor to intervene directly and personally in the process to get it back on track to at least stage and beginning work, disconstruction season, if at all possible. One of the arguments I made on that level was, you know, it was a plan with alliance and their representations about this construction project that we made the decision to close Gomnau's beach for the summer. If they're not going to do this work, we need to reconsider the decision to close that beach. It's fine when it's 70 degrees out, we all wonder about the money and whether they're going to clean it up. But if it's 96 degrees out and people need a place to cool off, there won't be so many town meetings. So I think my, if I didn't get a response by June 2nd, I'm scheduling a meet with the Secretary of Economy for this date. On that day, I'll bring it to his attention and try to get him into audience some other way. Thank you.
So what is our, what is our strategy with the beaches between now and that date uncertain?
I think it's going to come up later on when we discuss recreation. But my intention at the moment is to reverse the decision and open the beach.
Entertainer motion to approve CA 4?
Motion to approve CA 4.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. CA 6.
I wanted to pull this off to agenda, Madam President, because Mr. Arujal is sick tonight and he will not be able to attend. I'd like to put it back on the agenda for, on June 8th.
It was referred to the police chief though. Do you think he would have a recommendation by then? He doesn't, he probably hasn't even seen this yet. I, I'll check with him before I, before we proceed.
Mr. Arujal said even being on the consent agenda, he would have liked it so he could say, speak on it. Chief already has the reference.
Okay. All right, we'll put it on the next, next agenda. I entertain a motion to approve CA 6.
I make a motion to approve CA 6.
Second.
Motion remain second, all those in favor. CA 7.
It's just that I won't be able to make the June 29th meeting, so I've been asking this to be pushed back from the 7th to the next three meetings, three Mondays.
Madam Chair, would I be heard now?
We've already got a recommendation from our attorney that this was fine to continue with this.
And now let me just make a real quick statement?
No.
Madam President, I-
Please, one second, please. This is just to have a hearing. This is just to set a date, that's all it is.
Right, and the quick statement is about setting the date. And it's one page, I'll be out.
Right, and our attorney has told us that we need to set these dates.
Well, that's fine.
Okay.
Did I make that decision after you let me read my statement?
Well, I have a couple of questions first of all, and then maybe we can circle back.
I just want to ask, why didn't we pick June 15th? Because it was going to be every other.
We said June, because the 13th is a regular council meeting and the-
The 15th isn't a regular council meeting.
What, June 15th?
My June 15th.
I can't add-
Oh, you can't advertise, that's what I'm asking, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so the first advertisement I could even get out was for June 29th. And then we said the Mondays, but of course, I put June 7th because June 6th is a holiday. So you said, there was an agreement to do Mondays in between council meetings. So this is just a start.
So what, what does the schedule look like?
The schedule looks-
What, I'm sorry, what are those holes, the Mondays we don't have meetings? June 29th?
June 29th.
The 6th.
On July, instead of the 6th is a holiday, so we went to the 7th.
Okay.
Which is a Tuesday. And June, and July 20th. That's as far as I've gone at that point. The council will have to tell me to continue to arrange for.
Okay. The question I have is, we have an agenda item G4 under new business where we discuss appointing special counsel for the appeals of the planning board decision of 4/28 related to master plan application.
Right, that's for the, go ahead.
That's for the what?
That's for the appeal.
Yes, so I'm trying, I just want to understand the schedule of appeals, and I also want to understand what, if any, impact that course, that legal course has on what we're doing. This is not an uncomplicated kind of course of events, and I want to understand, and I want everybody else to understand a little bit better how that works.
So what I would recommend is that you think of it as three separate silos. You have the planning decision of the master plan, which has now been appealed to the zoning board. That's one silo. You have the comprehensive plan amendment, which is its own silo, and then you have the zoning map and language amendment, which is its own silo. Those two, the zoning map and the comprehensive plan, can move forward because irregardless if, if this master plan is upheld or denied or sent back, your amendments are for that land and what to do with that land. So you're really thinking of it as the council should at the 30,000-foot level of dealing with those separate issues irregardless of what happens with the Carpionado project.
As the more quality of the land, it can cut-
Is on its own process.
What if that appeals process results in, can that appeals process result in an action that would alter our decision or our results on the amendments to the comp plan or zoning?
So what I would encourage the council is that you don't think about the Carpionado as you look at what the, these two proposals are before you. Because it may not be Carpionado, because that gets denied or remanded or whatever it may be, but it may be some other developer that comes in and it's looking at that, is this space appropriate for a comprehensive map, zoning map change or comprehensive plan change? So you're really looking at the holistic, what do we want to have used with this property as opposed to this specific application?
Madam Chair, may I please read my statement?
One second.
I'm letting that sit in. For one precipitated the other, and so how do, how does one remove the two things from being connected?
So what I would say is, because regardless of what happens with the master plan, somebody else could come in with a new master plan. And you want to have the guidelines which are being, have been recommended to you, and that's all they are, is a recommended, recommendation from the planning board.
But those recommendations were precipitated by a proposal.
Correct. But a proposal can be changed, and you can still be within the confines of what you approve or don't approve for the comp plan or the zoning map changes.
So if Carpionado doesn't work out, that would be prepared for someone else who came in.
That is correct. And that those, it would confine the individuals who could come out.
You have a council, one second, the council's going to ask questions first, if they have any. This really isn't a public hearing, you know that, Louise.
I understand that, but there are people here that have somewhat of a view about fairness.
Okay, one second, please.
It can only be discussed at the next meeting.
Dave is right, once we do have this hearing, then that is a public hearing and everyone can be heard.
It's not an issue.
Okay, go ahead, Dave. Do you have any question?
I just wanted to, I know this is back in G4, but I believe the zoning board, I mean, they mentioned this afternoon. The zoning board of appeal is meeting on 7th of June, I think. And if they are-
They only have tentative dates, they don't have any set dates.
Okay. If they do meet on 7th of June, tonight is the only time that we could appoint a special counsel for it.
Right, I will do that.
Because we don't have enough time.
So they're meeting two days after we were going to meet on this?
Correct. So that 29th is an important meeting, and that would be why we'd have to cancel it. It's one cancel.
I mean, it would just start the process.
It's just starting the process.
We're going into what that happened.
No, what I'm saying is, I'm not saying it's a terribly important meeting, I'm saying it's starting the process. What's the, what's the harm in putting it off a week or two?
What's the harm in this? What's the harm in constantly listening?
I don't want to, I don't want to talk about this as though it's some, you know, easy peasy, run it's easy deal. This is a complex set of issues that we need to all be at our best about. And, you know, if that means we only need to be here, I think that, you know, defies logic why we would voluntarily eliminate one of our members because of the too weak time thing.
Nancy, how about July 6th? What did you say about July 6th?
I said that was a holiday.
Oh, it is.
We're celebrating the 4th of July.
All right, my job's celebrating it on the 3rd.
It has July 6th, 3rd. Yeah, the holiday.
I mean, I'm just asking because my employer does it on the 3rd, so that's why I'm wondering. So we could always do it on the 7th.
Sure, Tuesday.
I'm free on the 7th.
I'm on vacation.
I am.
The 7th, July 7th.
We'd be scheduling these at the high school.
Right.
Exactly, oh yes, that's right. So it wouldn't conflict with other meetings that were going on that.
Right, and I-
Yeah, give me a second, that would be our first meeting.
That would be the best one.
Let me make this clear right up front. I'm going to plead almost totally against zoning issues, land use issues. But before we go through the process, I want to make sure that I have a complete understanding of what the role of the town council is with respect to this recommendation on comprehensive plan amendments and the zoning map and tax amendments. I want to know exactly what our role is and what criteria we're using. But by the same token, I want to make sure that before you get involved in the process, I want to make sure I have an understanding of what the zoning board of appeal is doing. I want to know what's been appealed of there, I want an understanding of what those issues are, and I'd like to have an understanding of what the criterion is for the, for the review. And I'd like that to, I'd like to get that, that type of information, that type of preparation before we begin our process. I want to make sure that I have an understanding of what the heck of a value you have.
From a technical standpoint, at this point in time, what I would recommend is if you're willing to entertain a motion to actually combine G4 with CA 7 so that we can have these discussions together so that we're not in any violation of open meetings act, and we can take those piece by piece.
Entertainer motion?
I make a motion to combine G4 with CA 7.
Motion remain second, all those in favor? Okay.
Okay. Matt, do you want to handle the, no, no. So I, I think maybe, Councilman Lambert, to start off the process, what I can say is, before the planning board were three really separate issues, right? There was the master plan approval for the Carpionado project.
I don't want to put you in the, frustrate you to make this presentation right now. Because if you're, if you're perfectly fine-
I would let you know when I'm not fine, if I have time. So there were three issues of the master plan approval, which the, the planning board voted on and approved with certain conditions. They also made two recommendations, one with regards to a comprehensive plan amendment, and then one with regard to zoning map and language amendments. Those two issues, the next step, all they are were recommendations from the planning board to come to you all. You will then have a public hearing on the process, you will hear from everyone in the public, you will hear from the applicant as to their reasoning, and then you would do deliberations and make decisions. You could take the recommendations of the planning board as a whole in one big bundle and say, "We like this and let's go." You can make additional amendments as you feel fit. And you can change and address those, we would have, it's really, you'll combine them, but you'll make two separate decisions, one with regards to the zoning map and one with regards to comprehensive plan.
I was going to ask, does that include the conditions as well?
So the conditions are only on the master plan. The conditions do not apply. You will see within there, there are certain, I would call them restrictions, not conditions. So it's, they are not specific to the application, they are specific to the land. And that's why you can hear those separately. With regards to the appeal, and I think there's, I know Matt's had some thoughts on, we've all had some thoughts on the legal council piece. What happens is, the planning board's master plan has been appealed to the zoning board. That will then be heard by the zoning board, and dependent upon what all the parties decide, it can be appealed to Superior Court and to Supreme Court, and that is a much lengthier process, right? They can, there's, there's separate processes for the comp plan and the zoning plan, but those are the two areas that sit directly with the council. If you didn't approve those, this project may come to an end, and you may, may not hear anything more from it. If you do approve them, there's also certain steps that can be taken after that. But those are the two that sit specifically in your wheelhouse. The master plan does not. You do not have authority over that at this point in time, nor would you.
What criteria are they using? Can they review this in a sense of a hearing de novo? Or do they have to give some sort of deference to whether you define as a fact that you're, are doing this zoning board?
So you will receive the recommendations of the planning board, but really with regard to any other issue, all they are recommendations. So it is essentially a hearing de novo where all parties will have the opportunity to present their sides to you.
Does that also be true then with the zoning board?
That is not, that is an appeal. And so it stays in the calendar.
Then I would have to find some error of law, application of law, or some interpretation of facts.
They have very specific guidelines, which they have to look at and would be advised as such.
That was very good, very fun.
It's not my first reading on this.
Do you have a one-page letter?
No, I don't have a statement.
Well, a statement, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the council. My name is Ken McGonigal, and I'm an attorney that represents Don't Malt Tiverton, the nonprofit corporation formed to promote responsible and economic development complying with the town of Tiverton's history and lifestyle. This evening, you are discussing the advertising of a public hearing for the amendment of your community's comprehensive plan and your zoning ordinance involving the project known as Tiverton Crossings or Tiverton Glen. In April, the board granted this commercial development master plan approval. And on May 15th, Don't Malt Tiverton and several individual residents appealed the decision to the zoning board. This developer, we believe, is asking the town to make so many changes in order to accommodate its plan, a lot more thoughtful consideration is needed. We think the planning board failed to address all of the inconsistencies between the proposal and the comprehensive plan. This will be spelled out more in the legal memorandum that'll go to the appeal at zoning board. The appeal is currently scheduled, according to Jody, to be heard on July 1st, 2015. I understand that that's all in flux, but that's what, last thing she told me when we filed the appeal on May 15th. The Don't Malt Tiverton is requesting simply that the town council postpone the public hearing on the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance amendments until after the zoning board's decision is made, simply to protect the public, the residents of Tiverton's right to appeal. We feel that it'll be likely that the zoning board's decision will affect the zoning map, text amendments and comprehensive plan amendments that the town council considers. A reversal or remand of the planning board's decision will mean that the plans for the site, and possibly even the site itself, will change. Tiverton residents have this right to bring an appeal, and they have exercised this right. The town residents have the right to the fair hearing, and if the town council were to begin the process of considering these amendments, it would interfere, we fear, with the zoning board's appropriate consideration of the issues. Further, the planning board cannot go forward until the appeal is decided, so a delay here, putting it on hold, would not impair the work of the planning board or the proposed development because it's on hold. We don't really believe, as your council said, that it's three silos. We really think it's one big project. And we'd like to ask, if you don't agree with that, all we're asking is that you let that portion go forward, and then you take those two items under consideration. Given the costs in advertising, town employee and town council time involved in this, we really believe it would be advantageous to the town to just wait until the appeal is done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I, I did have one question.
Well, I was going to ask Stephanie's opinion.
I'm counsel for the applicant, I'd like to respond. I'm counsel for Carpionado.
There'll be no response right this moment. Go ahead.
I'm going to, well, I will ask my question. Assume we were to agree with you, counsel. When, what year would you expect this town council to finally see this plan? I know as a fact that this, this plan in one fashion or another has been around for about three and a half years. It was before the, the planning board, I assume, for something like 24 months, 26 months. If there's any more continuance, when would we actually see this? And I know at this point, you must be talking in years, not in months.
Councilman Lambert, I might actually be able to offer some insight onto that, and that is that even if the zoning board was to take the matter up and decide the matter on their first meeting, the appellate process between the Superior Court we're looking at years. So we're looking at probably a two to three-year process.
And, 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 counsel, I'm sure you're doing your job, but what I would anticipate is that with the conclusion of whatever work is done by the zoning board, if you don't agree with it, we will then file an appeal to the Superior Court, and we'll hear from you again, and then there will be an appeal to the Supreme Court. This could go on for generations, seven, nine years.
May I refine to that?
I would like Stephanie to give you an opinion to what was just said. Do you still believe?
I still believe, I still stand on, on what I represented. They are three separate issues, and the reality of it is, the master plan and the conditions that the planning board put on that master plan are not within your purview. They fall to the zoning board acting as the appellate board, and then they would file to Superior and Supreme Court.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. What is our timeline for submitting our comprehensive plan? We had an update that was supposed to be done by the end of last year, and we got an extension.
So these amendments, you can actually put forward comprehensive plan amendments? The town council can do that up to four times a year?
And this is only, this is, because I see that the two letters we have from the planning board both read, Ray, recommendation on comprehensive plan amendments and recommendation on zoning amendments proposed by Carpionado Group LLC. Presumably, these are not the entirety of the amendments to the comprehensive community plan.
We certainly, you mean outside? No, the planning board is taking a cohesive look at the entire comprehensive plan, doing that section by section as, as they have the expertise and weigh in. So that goes as, as one solid lump.
What does that do?
Up to four times. Kate, do you want to help me on the timeline of that?
June 2016, I think, is the date that it has to be submitted to the state.
Okay, thank you. Is that true, Kate?
We're actually under a leasehold, I think, as of the state.
Yeah.
Our plan expired in November of 2014, so we're actually working on it at this moment. The planning board has, I think, four or five elements left to go through, and they have pretty few scheduled meetings to finish that process and send everything to the council for the remainder of the year.
Good evening, I'm Karen Browning. I represent Carpionado Group. Very, very briefly, we do agree with this listener's position. The matter has been appealed on the master plan part. That appeal is properly before your zoning board of appeals. The two issues before you, again, we agree, are the comp plan and the zoning amendments. We have started this process in 2013. It has taken us two years to get through the master plan. Having recently obtained master plan approval, we are excited to move forward and would like that process to continue. For that reason, we would not want any further delays. I understand the position taken tonight by Don't Malt Tiverton. However, the issues that they're bringing up, they could bring them up at the next hearing, either on June 29th or the July 7th meeting, at which time it would be a public hearing, and they could be heard done. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we're not concerned about being heard, we're just concerned about you wasting time and money.
This isn't a public hearing, and I let both sides talk, so I'm going to move forward. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I just have a couple more questions, and, and this is the last I'm going to bang my fist on the table, metaphorically. I guess I'm just, and I, I don't think the 29th is, is, is a good idea, but I think the 7th is, is only a short amount of time afterwards, a week later. I think that's totally reasonable, and if we're all going to be there, I think that's a good way to start off a hearing process. It's going to be lengthy and in-depth. The only question I have is, I do not understand how, and it may be, it'll become apparent when we start this process, how we are to separate or segregate these three items from themselves or from one another in that these two things that we are, these zoning amendments and comprehensive plan amendments make that master plan possible, or they make it probable. I don't know how you can separate those things and still be, I don't know, I don't know how that's going to work just yet.
So I'm trying to give a, a simple example. What, part of what you're going to be asked to discuss and decide is with regards to a mixed-use development district. Within that are lots of specificities as to sizes of tents that can be on there. How, when it comes to mixed use, how the development has to happen as a phase- when it comes to mixed use, how the development has to happen as a phase in of all residential, commercial, hotel, those types of things. You will then also look at the zone map. However, if you've done a comprehensive plan amendment at any point in time in the future, you can go and say, we want a mixed-use development to apply over here, and so we're gonna just do the zone map amendment in the future. So, it's really about the concept of a mixed-use development, and then a zone map that says, this is, this is an area that we like for this.
Oh, I mean, I respectfully disagree with that because there's no way you can, if, if you're trying to say, if we're trying to say that in, in a vacuum, we are creating these comprehensive plan amendments and zoning amendments for some future hypothetical, that's fine. I totally agree with that. I have a pretty extraordinary imagination and I can imagine those sorts of scenarios. But we aren't doing that. What we are doing is, we are hearing recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments and zoning amendments that enable a particular development to exist. Without that particular master plan application, we would not be sitting as a hearing board for these two zoning amendment, use table, and comprehensive plan amendments. That's all I'm saying, and that, I just want, that, that becomes a very tricky, who's walking with the left foot and who's walking with the right foot type of arrangement.
I, I think it's kind of that concept of, if you build it, they will come. At one point in time, you dealt with a zoning map amendment for an industrial park when nobody knew what was going to be there, right? So, you were planning ahead for something that you wanted that didn't necessarily exist at the time. This is saying, mixed-use development is something that we want to see in Tiverton, even if halfway through the appellate process Carpionado backed out, there could be some other developer that wants to work within the confines of the comprehensive plan.
I appreciate the amendments that were dictated by and agreed to by a particular applicant. And so, that's where we're not talking about hypotheticals anymore. We're not, we're not, and act, we're not active or proactive with our industrial parks scenario. We are reactive to a particular application.
And certainly, some of the recommendations that you will see were initiated by the Carpionado applicant. There were also many other pieces that were initiated by the planning board separately and kind of confined and restricted what Carpionado wanted to do.
Okay, I'm gonna move.
We still need to talk about hiring. We're talking about that.
Well, I know, but I thought we'd make a decision on the, um,
No, well, yeah, that's fine.
Schedule the meeting and then we'll make a decision on the lawyer. Do one thing at a time so that we don't, um, at this point, I'd like to know the council's pleasure on the date. Would someone like to make a motion? Or if we're gonna move forward.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll just move that we approve CA 7. Instead of June 29th, the first meeting can be July 7th, so that we can accommodate everybody on the board at the first meeting. I presume this will be a lengthy, uh,
Oh, yeah.
... experience and, and no shortage of sweaty nights in the ordering of the high school.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Could I just say, because I have to book the school, um, high school, the coaching process, could you give me two dates?
How about June 20th?
Just as a backup if it doesn't?
All right.
So, I had July 7th and July 20th. Those were the dates you sent back to me that were okay. Are those two dates okay?
Let me check the 20th.
The 20th is, do you have my date?
This may as well be 100 years in the future because I don't know, it's gonna happen July 20th.
It's July.
July 20th is fine.
Okay.
So, I'll amend my motion.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to read the same as, it's printed with the exception, July 7th and July 20th.
We will, both dates, Nancy, if you can get both, because this will be a lengthy.
And then you can tell me if you want more, and I'll try to book, but I need to book those two at a time. I can go back and forth.
And we can talk more about G4.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, yes.
Okay. With the July 20th?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Motion to be made, second, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Now, we'll do the G4 back.
Hello, President. Would I request, um, I think under New Business to come next because there's a lot of children here that want to testify and get found.
The children want to testify? It's not a public hearing.
Oh, I know it's not a public hearing, but they want to speak on it.
All right, well, I'm still on the consent agenda, so. I know which one. I know which one. I know which one. G4.
All right, so, you know.
I know. Are you turning it on? We're doing, we're doing, I don't see.
I mean, we suppose we can, it's, it's their, I don't know.
Councilman Perry, G4.
Again, the dates that we have, Nancy, I believe the meeting was supposed to take place on the 1st. I think we have the 21 days.
That's what the attorney said too, that they're tentatively scheduling the appeal for July 1st.
Okay, so we need?
We need 21 days to go.
No, that's for these amendments that you just approved, those dates, July 7th and July 20th. I'll get the advertising out. The attorney will review it, get me advertising, I guess, and I'll go out in time for those.
Okay.
Now, you're on the special counsel. You don't need to advertise for that.
Okay. But so, we, we have to appoint a special counsel?
We have to appoint a special counsel.
The obvious conundrum is you will have one town board sitting as a board of appeal for another.
Correct.
And our general solicitor provides general advice to the council, but is also our land use attorney and provides advice both to the planning board and the zoning board. So, obviously, they cannot sit in both chairs at the same time. It is a matter of some importance in the legal profession, these different distinctions, because you have a choice. Who gets the special counsel? If the zoning board gets special counsel, then all of the legal and procedural advice provided by the sister law to the planning board that may or may not be subject to the appeal can be discussed at some length by the attorneys who need that advice to the appellate board with its own counsel. That's one option. The second option is to preserve the advisory role of the sister law to all of our boards and have special counsel appointed to the planning board for purposes of making its presentation. We are explaining its decision at that point, and so, you know, it's, it's not a distinction without a difference because it's a transformation of desistor from an advocate, from an advisor to an advocate. So, you know, that's a significant issue for attorneys. I think the preference of the town solicitor is to not be transformed into an advocate in any way, to retain the advisory role to every single board. Right. I'm not entirely, I mean, my personal recommendation, I don't really even have a dog in this fight at all, but I'm just saying, in terms of our preserving the full range of, of discussion in an appeal, I think it ties the hands somewhat of the council that provided the legal and procedural advice to also sit as the advisory counsel to the appellate board, because at that point, they may find themselves in a position to have to reverse their own advice, which I think is worse than being cast in the advocate role, they may put in the role of challenging their own decision-making process and the recommendations you need at the time. So, I know the solicitor would prefer to retain the advisory role. I actually think special counsel should be appointed to the zoning board for that very, for the reason I just explicated.
Stephanie, what do you think?
Um, I can tell you that in the past, we've actually, in the other municipalities that we represent, we have maintained that advisory capacity. We've actually reached out to Dave Curtin on the ethics to ensure that that was acceptable in the past. We have not done so with this specific case in full disclosure, but in both Warren and Lincoln, it is typical that we act in the advisory capacity throughout the process. So, both advisory to planning, advisory to zoning, and advisory to the town council as you take up the zoning map amendments and the comprehensive plan, and that special counsel is brought in to act in the advisory capacity. It is whatever the comfort of the council is.
So, the special counsel in your scenario would be for the planning board?
Would be for the planning board.
Correct.
To make their arguments before the zoning board appeals.
I suppose that has the potential of being the more cost-effective way, because you're not, you're not paying a special counsel to jump around from board to board and from appeal to appeal. You're rather just paying them to represent the one.
Okay.
The next obvious question is who we hire. I mean, we have an assistant solicitor on staff, but I'm not sure. I don't know what, what other way we, we go about hiring an attorney on such short order.
Do you have any recommendations, Matt?
I'm working on them. We did reach out to Kinder's Firm through Tim Cavazza, our labor counsel. He did not have anyone in his firm that he would recommend. He had other referrals. We've been a little bit busy with some of the things that we're gonna be talking about in executive session, so we haven't parsed that out yet. The process has its own vagaries and its own details, so we're looking for somebody with substantial experience in the zoning board, sitting as a board of planning appeals.
So, could we just make, um, all right, a motion to appoint a counsel to the planning board and leave it up to the discretion of the town administrator? You don't like that?
No, I'd like to bring in a couple of candidates and a recommendation.
And when I said assistant solicitor, I forgot about Tim Cavazza, but I was referring to Matt Oliverio, who's our special counsel on the matter and has served as special counsel for charter complaints and I feel like one more thing, he helped, he advised us on something relating to the,
Who's the executive?
Something, but he's, he's proved to be competent and maybe a call to him, he might have a recommendation as well.
Yeah, there was one specific case that he's representing the town, because the town's theory of the case was reversed and the existing solicitor couldn't do that.
But he's also served as our counsel when we've had to hear charter complaints and when the prior town.
I mean, I've worked with Matt Oliverio extensively, so I have a very high comfort level with Matt, but it all depends on the pleasure of the counsel and whether he's available or not.
He's a name to put on the list.
So, could we discuss that at the June 8th meeting?
Yes.
We'll put that on the agenda.
Put that on the June 8th agenda.
The June 8th meeting, yes. So, we'll table this discussion until?
Madam President, I'd like to table the discussion until June 8th.
One second.
We'll just continue, well, that's what I said. Motion to be made, second, all those in favor? Okay. We're still on the consent agenda, by the way. C9, Tiverton Water, Waste Water District Distribution of Phase 1, so extended project information packet.
Uh, I just wanted to make sure that the counselors were up to date on what the Tiverton Waste Water District was proposing. They provided with an information packet to the council. They held three public information sessions for the Riverside and Robert Gray project areas. They occurred on May 13th, May 18th, and May 20th. The timeline for the voting process, ballots will be mailed out on May 29th. They're due back to the Tiverton Waste Water District on June 12th, and they will be counted on June 15th, and the results will be announced at that time. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Entertainer motion to approve CA 9?
Make a motion to approve CA 9.
Second.
Motion to be made, second, all those in favor? Okay. Now, my, we do have a public hearing that people are here for also, so I think my suggestion would be to do the public hearing and then go to New Business, G3. Is that okay with everybody?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Fine, it's me.
Well, that's what I'm, yeah, I'm gonna advertise there.
Do C and then G3.
Yep.
I move that we move item G3 under the C, under the heading of C to follow C4.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to be made, second, all those in favor? Okay. Town council sitting as a board of licensing, advertise licenses, public hearing, Riptide Sports Grill Incorporated, One Bay Street, Tiverton, Rhode Island, request approval for BV liquor license, subject to meeting all liquor requirements.
Good evening. Court Chappell on behalf of Riptide Grill, Inc. To my right is Bethany Shaker. She is the sole shareholder and sole officer of Riptide. We're here tonight asking for two licenses. One is a VIT license and the second is a BV liquor license. For those of you that were on the council back in September, we appeared, I believe there was kind of a misconception at the time that she had to apply very quickly because of the availability of her license. That turned out not to really be the case. It was withdrawn with prejudice, well, I'm sorry, without prejudice, and there was a discussion about refiling within six months. This ended up a new filing when it came in after the six months. But to remind the board, this is the One Bay Street property. It was formerly the Seabreeze Restaurant and Lounge. And the first thing you should know is that after acquiring the property, there was an issue of whether the grandfather rights of a pre-existing non-conforming use restaurant and lounge were preserved in what was an R30 district. If you recall, this is on at least the outskirts, depending on what Matthews, of the moratorium area. That was one of the problems with selling. There was a foreclosure, and when my client, Bethany Shaker's family bought the property, we specifically asked for a zoning certificate. And on August 7th of 2014, and I believe it's in your file, a zoning certificate was issued by building officials saying that it was not an abandoned use, and we in fact had grandfather rights to operate as the proposed use of a, of the Riptide Sports Grill. With that said, I think the VIT license is no more than convincing you that we have the proper safeguards in place with DEM, Department of Health, Fire, and the Police Department in order to reset up that establishment. Clearly, for those of you who were here last time, there was problems with the neighbors, and I don't know that we'll ever win the hearts of you or all of them, but it is clear that a nightclub was frowned upon and a restaurant clearly would have, would have been blessed a little more easily. So, part of our presentation tonight is to convince you that we have done everything and all of our homework to show you that this is a restaurant with a liquor license and not a liquor establishment that serves food. So, with that said, Bethany is here to tell you a little bit about the project, but we will begin by, does the council have the plans?
I don't believe.
We had a set of plans, and I also took the liberty, if I may pass them out, to have a number of plans, which I think that may have by 11.
You can hand it to the clerk.
It should be the plan you asked.
It's in the, yeah, it probably is.
It is. Some of them were updated for fire.
You've already submitted five, 1915.
I think we have enough. I just want to make sure we weren't struggling with the larger plans.
Do you have another one there?
When you're called, I think, do you have one, do you?
I can't, I have one, but I,
They're, they're attached. Eight and a half by 14. They're folded. They're not very clear, though.
I'm saying this eight and a half by 11 is much clearer than the miniograph copy.
Yes, my C1 doesn't look like their C1.
Your C1 looks like 18.
Yeah, no, I'm missing some, but it's okay. It's all right.
We also have a large plan with the Mala Board, if it might be easier to say, but it is the same plan as before. Basically, though, for those of you that have ever been there, there's not any great structural changes that are, that are proposed. The restaurant has a pre-existing structure. What we had to do was actually take away space because there was one thing that's never grandfathered, as you know, and that's the buyer code. You've seen that in areas like Little Bear Lounge and those things. So, because of the square footage, there were certain things, according to our experts, that if we left it the size of it and originally proposed it as a function room and those things, of it and originally proposed it as a function room and those things, that may have required sprinklers and things that did not make the project economically feasible. So what you do see in the plans is there was a large area of function room that was now closed off and walled off and a vestibule put in because that would have prevented that second egress that was necessary also for fire. But basically, the building is pretty much the same. The bar area is reconfigured to be smaller than it was. We've also gone to DEM, and I have from DEM, a, well, start with the Department of Health. We've gone to the Department of Health, and on May 12th of 2015, we were issued a letter saying, "Dear applicant, the plans for the above-mentioned establishment addition have been reviewed and approved with the following provisions." There are a number of provisions that are condition precedent to opening. They include some, a three-base sink and a hand sink, separate storage facilities. But the Department of Health has in fact approved the location up to present conditions. I think I have, you should have that in your packet as well. We also went to DEM and had the conformance of the septic system done, and that determines really how many seats you can have in a restaurant. And that was 32 seats and eight bar stools for a total of 40 patrons at a time. As you know, most of your restaurants in town all are dictated by septic on how many seats they can have. Now, with that said, last time at least, the fire department had not reviewed the plans, and I think it's fair that they got the full set of plans just the last couple of days, and they have not been formally approved, but they are being looked at. And we certainly know that the fire department, prior to the issuance of any license, would be a condition precedent. What's most important for my presentation tonight is that originally Bethany didn't really have all of that put together. Since the last meeting, she's hired an architect that's drawn these plans, a Clark Security Company that had put in their input regarding some of the fire issues, and then a specialist named Ray Gomes, who also drew in the final set of plans. Note that the fire department does not approve just merely on what DEM says. They look at a building and look at the size of a building and determine what the occupancy could be, not specifically how many seats. So the fire department plans, there are more seats drawn on your plans for occupancy purposes than there are for DEM purposes, but you are limited, like every restaurant, from the septic system as well. The other thing that you should remember is when it was here before you in September, there was an entertainment license and there were gaming license that were with it. But again, I think the police, the fire, and the neighbors were all worried about this being a nightclub and a bar. There is no entertainment license in front of you. There is no request to have bands. There is no request to have music. If that should happen, she needs specific approval back in front of the appropriate boards for that to happen. There's not even a request for a pingball machine and a claw and some arcade games for the kids, which we are going to do, but we have to come back for that as well. There's specifically no request for a pool table or darts because she wants to start this up as a restaurant. She wants to get the restaurant running. She thought if the bar and darts were in the lounge area, it may start out with a clientele that was more bar-oriented than restaurant. So it's designed and timed to make this a family-oriented restaurant, neighborhood restaurant that serves alcohol. You'll see in the package a copy of the menu. It's a little preliminary, but it is typical menu, food of, lunchtime menu of sandwiches and salads, aiming for the price ranges from $6 to $9 for lunches, with a regular dinner of some seafood and some entrees aiming between $10 and $13 and $14. It is, it is per goal to make it an affordable family restaurant. We have talked about hours of operation because I think hours of operation or something.
It's okay.
I'm sorry. Hours of operation or something that I think the chief certainly had a problem with. Obviously, if you request a 2 o'clock closing or even a 1 o'clock closing, it looks like a nightclub. It smells like a nightclub. How do I know it's not going to be a nightclub? So although we would very much like to probably be open later, there were discussions with the chief. I'll let him speak for himself. But there were discussions with my client to close at 10 o'clock. She's actually proposing 11 o'clock under the following theory, under a sports bar and grill or a neighborhood place. We want to have people come in and be seated as late as 10 and serve them for dinner, but we don't want to necessarily have them seated at 10, close at 11, but not be able to serve them if they, if they sit there with one of the only sports gyres in town. Softball, for instance, you may play till 8 o'clock on unlighted fields. You may play till 9:30 on lighted fields. If some sponsored sport team comes in, we want to be able to sit them at 10 o'clock for dinner and at least give them a drink with dinner before we close at 11 o'clock. Again, I think the judge, the chief wanted 10, and quite honestly, we would go to 10. We were just asking you to go to 11 because part of getting the money into this relatively rundown spot out of pocket because banks aren't lending early in the moratorium area at this time means that we have to put in everything that we have. And unless we start out with a market plan that's economically feasible, it, we certainly do not want to be bound to fail from the beginning. Now, does the council, council have the package from DEM approving the 40 seats?
No.
Now, that's the restaurant portion of this, which I think is the easier portion of this. The second aspect of it is the liquor license. The liquor license, you would have to find that Riptide Grill and specifically Bethany Shaker was a suitable person, whatever the definition of that is, to hold such a license. And for those of you that weren't here last time, there's a white elephant in the room, and it is that it was put on the record that Ms. Shaker had family members, specifically her father and uncle, who owned a nightclub in the city of Fall River that was closed down and whose license was revoked. And there were allegations that Bethany was involved and specifically involved with the sale of drugs. She was charged. There was actually a-
Go ahead, it's all right.
I'm sorry. There was actually a trial in which she was found not guilty. So she stands before you. She has never pled no oath to a misdemeanor or felony. It's not clever lawyering. She has never been convicted of a misdemeanor or a felony, but she was charged. She maintained her innocence, and she was found not guilty. And I do have a certified copy of her Massachusetts BCI, Bureau of Criminal Information, which shows that those two charges that were brought against her from the single instance back in March of 2011, she was found not guilty on those. Other than that, she stands before you, I believe, born in 1982?
Yes.
Makes her 33 years old. She is a high school graduate. She worked as a prison guard for the Department of Corrections for the state of Massachusetts. Was not dishonorably discharged, but hurt herself. And when she hurt herself, she was out on a disability and is the reason she was seeking alternative employment. Recently, and I have some information for you here, she took the building that lost its license and is not a bar in Fall River and began to run a teen center. And unfortunately, one of the mothers who was going to come give a testimonial had children and had to leave at 8:30. But she runs a teen center. We have letters that I think are in the file from Leeud Pelletier, who's the city council in Fall River, commending her for her work there. We had letters from the neighbors, the laundromat, and some of the other businesses on that street, saying, again, they commended her efforts with running that teen club, at that teen club. She has entertainment licenses. She has VIT licenses. She's had them for 2012, 13, 14, and 15. Has never been cited for a violation, has never had any problem with any of those licenses, and is in good standing. If anyone tried to go by there in the last couple of months, unfortunately, there was a, I don't want to call it a disaster, but the, this winter caused some ice heaving, and the roof was compromised, and it's closed because of what's waiting on insurance proceeds because the floors were ruined and destroyed. And, but other than that, she, in my opinion, is a fit and proper person, not only for the VIT license, but for the liquor license. We would do any conditions, I think, that are reasonable to say to you, we'll put our money where we're mouthfuls. We are going to be a restaurant. We are, we have no problem with hours of operation, again, beginning at 11 a.m. We'd ask for 11 p.m., but recognize the chief wanted 10. It's conditioned on the fire department granting all licenses, Department of Health finishing their inspection, and limited to the Department of Environmental Management number of seats at the restaurant and bar.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a clarifying question for the record?
Sure.
You had indicated 40 seats by DEM, correct?
32, to be exact, 32 seats and eight bar stools. They call a bar stool, I believe, 10 gallons per day, and I believe they call a restaurant seat 15 gallons a day, and then they divide it out.
Okay. The plan that is before the council is for far more than, so my concern, for the council purposes, my concern is, is if this plan is part of the record that you approved?
There are 88 seats in that plan, just.
And I disclose that, but I'll say it again and try to do it right for you. I believe that all restaurants are barred, if you will, or bound by the DEM rates that say how many seats there are. I don't think you necessarily want to drive around town and find out what that is, but that's what they are, and that's what you're approved for. When you submit plans to the fire department, there's an occupancy. And there, when you've put 32 seats in here, according to Mr. Gomes, there was something about vacant spots. You want to fill the spots. I'm sure your fire chief may be able to tell you something on that. But what we were asking for is no more nor less than the Department of Health allows, which is the 32-seat restaurant with the eight bar stools. And as long as we can remove them for the purpose of the plan for approval, we would have no objection to that. Again, my understanding is Mr. Gomes called me and said, "I've got to fill those areas with seats on my plan for the fire department," because they go on a square footage, I believe, not merely by, I don't think you can come in with a 10,000-square-foot building and say to the firemen, "I'm only going to have three people in here." They want to, they want to do an occupancy permit based on how it fits into the fire code.
It also has a bearing on parking. You're required to have four parkings, one parking space for each seat, every four seats. And if you've got 88 seats potentially, you now need six more parking spaces than you proposed.
Well, you're absolutely true, but I will tell you that at the zoning board, if this was a new application, that would be absolutely true. This is a pre-existing non-conforming use, which we don't need that. We also took the liberty of drawing the 16 spots that fit just in the parking lot, and they're regulation-sized spots that would be consistent if we were in front of the zoning board, drawn to your regulations. That does not-
Pre-existing non-conforming use, but was the use prescribed as an 88-seat restaurant and bar?
Well, it's the same septic, so I assume that DEM had it the same. I can tell you that those rules don't usually apply to how many people are actually there if you check what the capacity of DEM is.
That would make the argument you can't rely on it, then, as an indication that that was a pre-existing non-conforming use. If it's not a disqualifier, it doesn't, doesn't also-
But it also was, also as a pre-existing non-conforming use, a full function room. The only reason it's not a full function room now, which is much larger than the capacity for these 40 seats, is because you never grandfather the fire code, and the function room is what, one of the things with the square footage that had to be taken out. So it is less. I also brought you a bunch of pictures because in fairness, even though there's 16 spots on the property itself, if you go to the north where the sewer plant is, State Street's about 20 feet wide until it gets adjacent to this property and then widens out to 40 feet. There is a complete row of parking on that side. When we do zoning parking, and I can show you the picture, but when we do zoning-
I know, I know what you're talking about, but it's only a little area. It's not.
And there's a bunch of street parking, but again, when you do zoning, you don't do that. You just merely show the parking on the property itself. But given the one for four and given the 40 seats, we're required to have actually 11 or 12 because there's a residential unit upstairs that requires one and a half spots as well, but we have 16. Just so that I can show you what we're doing. This is a picture I'm showing you, I believe, of State Street, which aims, that's Bay, but that's State, it's on the side. Now, if I ask you to look at that, you can see the width of the street until such time it gets adjacent to the, and then it angles up at 45 degrees, so it's much wider. Then there's parking by the bulkhead in the back.
Because the north side is informed for.
But I-
We have, we have a lot of those. Well, State Avenue, most of the town is half and half, so it's a double experience.
Yeah, and I don't disagree. It's just that I think before, you know, I went down there personally, so if you try to intelligently talk about it, and if you circle that building, there are clearly areas where I thought the neighbors were concerned, especially right across the street, where you don't want patrons parking there and blocking your driveway. We'd be willing to put up any signs. We'd be willing to do any enforcement that you wish. We'll have to come back to you if you grant this license in X months, I think yours is December, whatever your annual is, and say, "Can we do this?" And I assure you that we're taking the position we're on some type of probation that is going to, is going to have to meet the concerns of the neighbors, that we are in fact a family restaurant and not a bar that's causing problems. I personally, when driving around that building, if I said I couldn't park in the parking lot, I thought I saw 40 different places to park before you'd block anybody. That sewer plant across the street-
It would be congested, though. It would be congested.
What I compared it to is the size of the parking lot at places like Little Care and at places like Tides and, or Family Ties and things. And it is a big parking lot that they have themselves, and more off-street parking than some of those areas. You go down the, I think it's the Spring Primavera I once represented, and they had to get some parking lots because there's so little street parking at all. I mean, there does seem to be quite a bit of off-street parking there that, you know, at our, the council, you know, if you want areas that are designated no parking for neighbors, we'll buy by anything you want us to do.
At this time, I'd like both chiefs to speak on this, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Sitting over there chomping at the bit. Take a little bit of an exception to what council is saying here. The fire department has not reviewed this. The fire department did not receive these plans three days ago. We received them this morning. So even though they've had someone to speak on or someone to look at it, looking, and I don't have a copy of what you have, but written on the top of that is underneath the International Building Code, not the Rhode Island Fire Code. My marshal just took a preliminary, preliminary look at them today. So council, to be able to say that DEM is going to determine the capacity, that is not correct. If we're going to set it at 15 square foot per patron in there, the number that you have there, I think they're showing 256. I'm not sure what the number would be because we don't know what they're doing with the rest of the building. That becomes the predominant occupancy of the building, what is set by the fire code. I cannot sit here as fire chief, and I don't know Ms. Shaker. I've only met with her one other time on this earlier this year when it came up before. But I've got to tell you, standing here as a fire chief, I do not recommend that you approve this now and that you table this until the plans have been reviewed and you have more concrete information, because what you're getting right now, to me, sitting over here, is a lot of double talk. And I have a problem giving you any recommendation to say that we should do that. We don't know enough about what is happening yet to be able to do that. And on both licenses, I would recommend that. We're looking at it as a building that's under construction, and we have not had the chance to look at the plans yet.
Thank you. Chief Blacky?
Madam President, members of the council, evening. My concerns, and of course, it's up to the council what they want to do with the license and all, but my concerns are the neighborhood noise, late hours, of course. As I, Ms. Shaker did stop by the office this week, about the hours. And I did say 10 o'clock if the council did decide to grant this license. I spoke with some of the neighbors down- I spoke with some of the neighbors down there, concerned late night hours leaving. I've heard it's going to be a sports bar, and I've also heard it's going to be a family restaurant. Family restaurants usually close, like Family Ties is an example, at 10 o'clock at night. Again, because council's probably, if they want to have this license, well, that would be fine. The neighbors do express some concern with the late night hours, and the parking is a concern. And I know the area you're speaking of around the back of the building, it is tough over there. And then we also have to take into consideration for the enforcement side is that we're so close to the four-over line. We're going to make this some place where they come over, I don't want to use the word, but the word is hit and run, come over here and then speed away, or spin tires, and I want to make sure that neighbors are protected against that, pretty much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing, hearing to the public. If anyone would like to speak, they can come up to the microphone.
Madam President and the town council, I am Francis Correa. I live right across the street from the Seabreeze. I was a manager there for nine, nine years. And council for Mrs. Shaker was talking about State Avenue. There's only six parking spots on State Avenue. It goes from the corner of the stop sign of Bay Street down to the door of where the kitchen is, and there's six parking spots there. And in the parking lot, you can put, I would say, sixteen cars. So that's a total of twenty-two vehicles. Okay? I have no objections to Mrs. Shaker of getting this license because as soon as I get my driveway done and I get the moratorium lifted on my property, I'm putting it up the sale and I'm going to Virginia. But it's not a problem. The problem is the noise and the beer bottles being thrown on the property. And I have to sell my property to people, and I cannot lie to people and tell them that that bar across the street is a fantastic bar, because I was there as a manager and I know what went on there. And he said that, the lawyer said that he's going to petition off the back part of that building. What are they going to use that back part for? Is it going to be a hall for dancing? Because I hear them say that eventually down the road, that they're going to come back to you people and ask for licenses for entertainment and pinball machines. It comes right back to the same thing. You're going to have all the people out in front of that bar because there's no smoking in the bar, or the restaurant, and they're going to be swearing and all kinds of stuff because that's what I went through for the last four years I ran that bar, when they came out with that rule of no smoking in the bar. And I had to move everybody around the corner on State Avenue where the kitchen was so the kids could not hear the fire language. That's the only objection I have, and that rests my case. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
A little slower than the last one I was here, sorry.
It's okay.
My name's Paul Tesero. I live on Bay Street. Thank you for listening to me. I was at the last meeting, and I have seen an attempt to try to answer some of our questions. However, my issues, most of them remain the same. The parking, Frank's right, the parking is diagonated to the sidewalk on State Avenue. You don't park on the other side. That's Massachusetts, by the way, and they can control that end of the street, do what they want, but I'm concerned with Bay Street. At the moment, there's only two of those living on that side of the street now. One of the neighbors is left. And I've petitioned several times to the Old Town Council to get sidewalks put on my side to keep cars away from my property. Didn't pan out, there's too few people. So I want to sneak this in. Should this go through, and they say they can provide the parking that they want, then don't let them park in front of my area. Don't let them park on the west side of Bay Street. You do that, that gets rid of a lot of my problem because they won't be against my property. Noise, I told you before that we have an oil tank farm down there on the west side of where I live, beautiful place, and on the east side, a big hill. So I'm in an echo chamber. I swear, if somebody's having a conversation down there, normal voice, especially during the summer, you can hear things going on. And I can't stop people from talking, and the limitation of hours can help. So again, I've got to admit that there's an attempt. My concern is that once you give them the license and they're going, they can't control the people that are there. We reference Little Bear, and I go there a lot, so I hope the owner doesn't shoot me, but I don't hear any noise there at all, ever, whether I've been there at night, whether I've been there in breakfast, a lot. It's very quiet. And there's a church across the street. Nobody makes any noise. So if you want to use that as the guide stick of what this restaurant should be, it should be quiet. It shouldn't disturb the neighbors. I've lived there for sixty-six years. I don't know how many more I'm going to get to live there, but we just want peace down there. You know what we've been through, and so we're a little irritated. I know Frank is, he wants to leave. But I'm going to stay because I can't leave. I just got an L U R and a whole bunch of other stuff, so I'm not giving my house away for half the price. So I'm stuck. You've got me between a rock and a hard place. And I'm asking you to look at the personal side of what's going on. I hear the police chief talking, I can see concern. I appreciate that. Now I hope that the town council will understand what we're talking about. I'm not trying to deny anybody their right for business, but don't deny me the right to have a peaceful home. So I hope you'll take that into account, and I hope this is the last time I have to come up here and say this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Carlos Samora, I live on Foot Street, which is right off of State Avenue, and I own that, well, my family's owned that property since 1944. We've had three different bathrooms there, St. Alfred's Simpsons Cafe, and went to the Seabreeze. And when the Seabreeze took over, that's when that hall came into effect. That's when I heard noise. Every Saturday night, I had my grandchildren over there, and that noise would be, the band would be playing loud. And I'm talking, I'm not talking rock and roll music, I'm talking this acid stuff, or whatever you want to call it. I'm concerned about my street, Foot Street, it's a runway going, yeah, no, south. And it's only wide enough to drive down it, not to be a parking area, not to be anything like that. My main, my concern with my wife is the noise, basically, and parking. I've never had a problem with the other owners at all. I'm not, don't consider them to have a problem with Ms. Shaker, but I'm saying, I go over to the wall and I say, "Hey, can you put it down a little bit?" And it would go down and right back up, and it'd be one, two o'clock in the morning. And I believe the chief could verify it. It used to be one, two o'clock in the morning on the weekends. I'm not on Sundays but Friday nights. And that's my concern, is the noise, parking, that's it. I remember when I played with Sam, the arrangement of parking. At one time, years ago, when Simpson had it across Bay Street, right across from the bottom of it, they used to park, there used to be a parking lot there, and that used to be full. But now it's owned privately, so that's not a parking lot anymore. It's just somebody's land, which is next to the other gentleman. So that's basically my concern, is, you know, is, I know that hall is a hall and they're going to be small, you know, it's not going to just stay a small dining room. That's my concern. Is it going to be like it used to be, where it went from the Simpson Cafe, it went from a sort of a restaurant, local bar, then it went to a dance hall, it went to, it really gained in popularity?
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Anyone else? Would anyone else like to speak?
My concern is my grandchildren. They play in that street. Now, if there are cars coming up and down that street that not supposed to be fast, and they go by pretty fast sometimes...
Which street is that, Millie?
Foot Street. I mean, it's a little street...
Yeah, I was there.
It's unbelievable, and I'm very concerned with my children, my grandchildren, they're my great-grandchildren, and I want them around for a long time, not cars that don't belong there.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Would anyone else like to speak? One last chance, anyone else like to speak? I'll close the public hearing right now. Stephanie, do you have any?
I do have a couple thoughts, Madam President, and that is, from a liability perspective, I would actually recommend at this point in time continuance of this matter, and I would recommend it really for two separate purposes. One, to be able to allow the fire chief to weigh in on this based on the plans that have been submitted. Second of all, to ensure the plan that moves forward with the council properly reflects the seating and parking capacities. My concern with that is, is that if you were to approve these plans as are, they do not line up. And so I don't want us to be at a place later on where, well, the council approved it with only sixteen parking spots when really zoning relief should have been sought on that, or that the seating capacity is now reflective based on the amended plan. So it's based on those two positions that I would recommend, that the applicant just clarify the plans and work with the fire chief and allow that file input to come into play prior to the council weighing in on this matter.
Any other questions from the council?
I have a couple questions to share. I think that's, that's totally reasonable, and can I just, has there been work going on at that facility to get it up to this, I mean, you've got a list of things that D E M requires, plumbing mostly and whatnot? Has there been construction down there, or?
I don't believe there's much going on inside at all. That, you have to submit the plans with your architect and show him what you're doing, and then he says, for instance, those surfaces, those steam-free surfaces, so even on the plans, they say, this is subject to you putting in this, you didn't have an extra dry sink, you put that in. If you go there now, it's my understanding, it kind of looks like a wrecking ball inside.
There's no, no, but no general construction work or anything like that?
There was some when I was down there. The construction weren't going on inside. Recently?
Mr. Palatier, we've been down there for rescue calls several times where there was, there was an occupant who was living upstairs that was doing downstairs work that has fallen off a ladder several times. I can tell you at least three rescue calls that we've been to that establishment to take a walk around there.
It was in the fall when I was there, I think.
It was just recently, I think, in December, January, again.
Right, it was, it was...
Again, that comes back to the same thing. I think we just need clarification that everything is above board and where we all need to be in.
Right, because we've got a letter from the building official saying that no permits have been pulled and no inspections have been scheduled, and I'm just trying to make sure that...
You can open that up to the building official?
What does that mean?
He knows, the building official is the one that walked through the property as far as I'm concerned.
How long ago?
I forget, when I was involved in it, in the summer of 2014.
Right. We have, we have a considerable amount of time between then and now.
If I can open it up for him to inspect and we could report to you and say, "There's all this work that went on at our apartment," that's a valid question for you to ask. But there's two types of things I can do. I can say, "Stay out, you can't see it," or I can say, "Open it up to you and walk your building inspector through it so we could report on whether or not the stuff that was going on down there was something that was either general maintenance or general cleanup that required a permit that you can, can pass some judgment on."
Okay. You can appreciate the nature of our apprehension when we are on notice that there was an inhabitant and a lieutenant, or someone doing work.
I don't go to the board, a lieutenant, I don't know that the building is not habitant, but not, they don't have to pass judgment on that?
Okay. Well, someone living there doing work.
I think it's been in the apartment.
Okay. Okay.
I don't, I don't.
The picture they were trying to make is very foggy at best, or, I mean, you can't deny that.
Okay. I'm denying a little bit.
In fairness, you just told us in your opening statements that this was done all out of cash, and that nobody would lend to somebody down in Bay Street area. The application, you say that the building is mortgaged.
The mortgage is to the guy who, the private guy that bought it, sold it to us. It's a private mortgage, and I can give that to him.
Okay.
What I meant to say, it's a, you know, this is not dancing, it's a distressed area that you can't go put. That building is in desperate need of someone going down there and putting in some money and rejuvenating, having that area look better. You can't do that without approvals.
I don't disagree.
And I don't think it's going to turn into what I saw if it becomes vacant for a long time. And sometimes you've got to dance with the devil that's in the room. I think, I'm not trying to be a bad guy, I think I have a zoning certificate that I says, "I have a pre-existing, non-conforming use, and I'm going to have a lounge down there, and a bar down there, and I can have a function hall down there." And that's not what they're doing. They're coming in here and saying, "That's not what this is." And they're saying, it's not right now, because we're saying you can specifically restrict it, and you can say that by us asking for this restaurant, you can say, "You're abandoned as a function hall, and what you are now is a restaurant with this liquor license." And if you expand it, then you're going to have to come before us to do that.
Any other questions?
I'd like to check the zoning, and I'm not, like Jay would say, I'm not the expert in zoning, but if that building's been vacant four or five years, maybe longer, I don't know, does it still fall under the non-conforming?
It's a great question, but before we came here, before we did what we did, you have a mechanism where we can go to your building inspector and request a zoning certificate. And the questions that were asked are, if it's been more than a year, is it abandoned? Is there a presumption, and they look at intent, and we showed him that it was a foreclosure, and then they said, can, you know, were things taken out of the restaurant, were the taps removed, were the refrigerators removed, were the hoods removed? And we said, yes, for those that were mortgaged by the bank at the time that took those out. We didn't have that intent to do it. We have an affidavit from the prior owner, the guy that actually bought it to try to renovate it before he ran into what he called the moratorium blues, and said he couldn't get private, public financing to do it. And he signed an affidavit saying to the, to the building inspector that he didn't intend to abandon it. It was just a kind of comedy of errors, that it was unoccupied, that there were no intent. And the building official issued that, and nobody challenged that, and nobody appealed that. And even when we came in September and represented that we have that, nobody has since challenged that, no one has since said that that is not a legally binding document, and we've spent tens of thousands of dollars on architects and consultants, and now a fire consultant that we're trying to get a plan to the police, to the fire department that they can approve. Chief, I'm sorry, I was not being disingenuous. I thought it was two days ago, three days ago.
It was today.
Okay. It was today. But while you're sitting here, please don't think that I'm going to try to get something by you here twelve feet to my left. It was just a mistake.
Any other questions? Look out for them. Thank you.
More quickly. For those who probably remember, if you remember the Chinese restaurant that was on Main Road that used to open like Monday, week, three a month, and that was, that was to avoid, you know, exactly what you were just talking about, about losing it. But the bottom line is, with that property down there, being, it was on the end of the moratorium, I can understand it, the special circumstance, and so I, you know, because of financing and things like that, I mean, insurance, getting the insurance down there for dancing can be tough, so, I think there is a special, you know, area. Move the vote. Move the vote, please.
Would you like to make a motion?
All I'm going to say is, I don't, I don't disagree that you've got the zoning chops. I think that's perfectly legitimate, and I think it's perfectly legitimate to have a restaurant in that facility. I don't think you can imagine pretty much any other use for a former restaurant than a restaurant. The problem is, the integrity of this process needs to be such that we need to know what we're approving, and to this point, we are... And to this point, we don't. You've got a plan that includes sixteen spaces, which I think is probably adequate for a facility that can hold forty people. It's not adequate for a facility that can host eighty-eight people and has potentially the capacity for two-hundred-and-fifty-six people. One, you know, birthday party, and you've got sixty cars up and down the road. I can understand where the neighbors are concerned about that. I just, I think we're still not quite at a place where I'm comfortable. I don't have any assurance that the fire code is being met or is met yet. We have no building permits pulled. We're not quite there yet, and I absolutely, this is part of the reason why we talk about process for licensing, this is that we have these things in advance and we're not approving away something that later we figure out, oh, we should have done X, Y, Z, a particular limitation on. I mean, to talk about hours of operation and restrictions, when we're not even sure what the heck this restaurant's going to look like yet from a physical standpoint, so. I think it's reasonable, and I'll make the motion that we continue this matter until a time when we have a formal recommendation from the fire department, formal recommendation from the building official.
So, we do have to have a date certain just because it is an advertised? Either maybe you want to ask the fire chief for an idea of a date, and if it's not ready, we can still do another continuation. We just want to make sure we have a date certain.
By fire code, we have to have fourteen days. It needs to look at them, review them, and we should know before that.
That's fine, June twenty-second. Yep, and then we at least know what the fire code says, and we can start to put this... I mean, if this is going to be a game of restrictions, then we need to some parameters as to what we're going to be doing. Because this is, at eighty-eight seats, this is a big restaurant in an area that can't support the parking potentially, or whatever it is. Anyway.
Do you have a second?
Sorry, it was kind of messy, but did you go with Nancy?
Wait a second. I just need a second, I have some paper. Give me a minute, thank you.
No, I would make this... Do you have to open the hearing? Well, I would, we have to open the second one. So, I move that we postpone the non-advertised license for Riverside Sports Square for the Victorian license to the date June twenty-second.
If you need a second, I have some paperwork.
Does the public chairman disclose except for the fire department's comments?
Yeah.
I have no problem with that. I don't know how I'd get building permit and anything better until such time. I can give you a drawing of size for limitation purposes.
I think a call to the building official and a gesture for a casual inspection would go a long way.
I think part of that, Madam Chairman, is the process is, it comes to the fire department. We review it, once we've reviewed it, stamped it, approved, put all the things into it, then it is sent to the building inspector's office, and he reviews it. And then, offered that, then they issue a building permit.
It's not already by twenty-second, we can continue it for another. It'll be on the agenda so we don't have to be out of time for that. I know, David Kershner LLC, local board, Four Sixty West, D'Amello Drive, Tiverton, request approval of Peddler and Hawker's license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Thank you for tolerating us this evening. Tell us a little bit about what you need.
I'm just requesting a food peddler's permit from the town council in order to work with the recreation department and possibly supply Fogland Beach with food and beverage services this summer.
Excuse me, Madam President. It's my understanding, and on the request, you put also any events. So, I suggested it's a peddler's and a Hawker's license.
I would also recommend that one of the conditions for the Hawkers license is entering up a contract with the town of Tiverton. We are in the process of drafting that contract. It will allow for certain liability protections to the town. I know that that had been represented as unacceptable, so we're just kind of crossing keys and dotting i's on that contract, and we'll get it over to you this week.
This is for the beach, by the way. This is our contract that we're talking about, you know, sort of exclusive rights to the beach.
Madam President, on a Hawker's license, you have to have the discipline, you have to have the commission to do it, so that's why the town was working on it. Also, you did want to also have a, that's what you requested, right?
Yes.
Peddler, so you can ride around.
Yes. Do you have to make a motion?
I would just like to add that we did meet with this gentleman today. We have reviewed what he has submitted to us. He has one more item that he needs to add, is a fire extinguishing system to his vehicle. He's talked with the marshal Murphy today, and as far as that, once that's installed, then the fire department has some problem with it.
I move that we approve the Hawkers and Peddlers license. Is it two different licenses, or? A Hawkers license and a Peddler's license. The Hawkers license for Fogland Beach. Okay.
And a Peddler's license.
And a Peddler's license.
That doesn't have to be the same.
For David, is it Kershner?
Yes, sorry.
Kershner LLC, local board, Four Sixty East, D'Amello Drive, subject to meeting all legal approvals, which would include a final sign-off from the fire marshal and a certificate of insurance.
And a contract.
And a contract for the Hawkers license.
Second, motions remain, second, all those in favor? Opposed, in the end.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thank you for waiting. Osprey Sea Kayak Adventures Inc., DBA, Osprey Sea and Surf Adventures, Valley Nine, O.T. Road, request an approval of recreation equipment rental license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is anyone here from Osprey? Is no one here from Osprey?
Right.
Did you know? And this is also for Fogland Beach. Where's Osprey? This is also from Fogland Beach.
Well, I move that we approve the recreation equipment rental license for Osprey Sea Kayak Adventures Inc. doing business as Osprey Sea and Surf Adventures, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
And the contract.
And the contract signed with the town of Tiverton.
Second.
I remain second, all those in favor? Now, we're going to go down to reconsideration of fee for recreation summer camp. I put this on myself, and I'll be short and sweet. I received several phone calls from people who are very upset with the new rates, which are a hundred dollars a week. It seems like we've outpriced Tiverton. I have heard, as of, before I left for vacation last week, there was only twenty participants, and in recent history, usually there's over ninety. So, I was concerned that we're really not servicing Tiverton with this program. If Susan would like to come and speak to that, am I right about the numbers? I just been, Susan, it's been a lot of concerns. A lot of people have said to me that they really never, they really never use this as per daycare. It was a place where the kids could come in the summer, where they can see each other because they're not in school anymore, hang out for a little while again. It was really never, for the most part, used for a specific eight-hour daycare. And what I understand is, there's not very many people interested in it.
Yeah, well, first of all, I just want to say, we think the recreation department, we do not function in the vacuum, we work under the guidance and direction of the town administrator. So, a lot of it, that's what we were charged to do when we started this season, was to come up with a plan to make this cost-effective, to actually work at level funded. So, we did research, and we worked very hard with it, and we communicated that with the administrator. And the number we came up with, and the sheet I did review of the last three years of the programs, the top was like the amount of hours, you know, that go for the six-week program, a hundred and fifty versus the two forty-five. The hours in the day, the total cost, we can see it goes from fifty to seventy-five to seven-hundred. And the cost per hour, I mean, but it was fifty dollars for the summer. It was said a thirty-three cents per hour. And that just doesn't exist anymore in this world. And even at this rate, it's a two eighty-six an hour is the cost. We were really anticipating and hoping for a better turnout by increasing the hours that we would get, a lot of working parents that are looking for all their care. We've come up with a lot of resistance. People want a drop-in service. People are, it was easy for people to pay seventy-five dollars and bring their kids for one week, or one day, or two weeks, or whatever. But if we were to try and make ends meet, we couldn't anticipate staffing for, you know, twenty kids one week and fifty another, because how do you hire your personnel? You have to hire for the maximum number, you can't hire for the minimum number to cover your child's to teacher ratio. So, that was some of the things that we were struggling with. And then we came up, I looked at what the payroll was. To be fair, in the first two of the summer of thirteen fourteen, the seventeen thousand and thirteen thousand also included the gymnastics programs. But this, you can see in the last column, basically what we did was by staffing it at an eight-to-one ratio, we were pricing it what was recommended to us, that we carried through and commissioned, was that we basically would break even for the town. And we just felt that that was the preferred course to follow in this economic and budget climate. So, I think, you know, a lot of what held in addition, the other thing was, we found that perhaps even, that this isn't, we talked about, maybe this isn't even a business that the town should be in anymore. Last year, we discontinued tennis and we discontinued swimming because there were only two kids that signed up for those two programs. And it used to be, and you can cite the same thing, you know, twenty years ago, ten years ago, there were fifty kids that signed up for it. Ten, twenty years ago, those programs were free, so why didn't people sign up for it? Last year, the gymnastics program used to be full, you know, a hundred kids. Last year, there were fifteen kids. It brought in a revenue of nineteen hundred, and we paid out fifty-five hundred in payroll because it was budgeted for a larger program that just didn't exist. So, we tried to set it up as a minimum number, something that would meet the needs, that wouldn't further have to be subsidized. And unfortunately, we found short of that. We have twelve people that have signed up. The people that have signed up have been thrilled, they think it's a very fair price. When you look at the bottom of the sheet, and I compared it to other programs in the vicinity, and by far, we are a very fair price. I looked at Bristol to see what they're offering, and they can offer seven weeks for a hundred dollars. But then you look at what their budget is, they're over three-hundred-thousand-dollar budget. So, their town is able to subsidize their recreation department to allow them to offer to their community a hundred dollars for seven weeks. And I'm, well, not just me, the commissioner, and the administrator of the mind that Tiverton is not in that position, that we can't do that. So, and even if I would say it's not just the summer camp program, so you wouldn't think that that's the bad guy. The one program that's done well for sign-ups at the center is the kayak and paddleboard program. That's something new, that's something people are interested in, and we're trying to change with the times. So, we also brought you the Osprey program to doing rentals. We're trying to bring food vendors into the area. We're trying to start thinking outside of the box. We're trying to think outside of what this program has been for twenty or thirty years. And so, people that want it what it was, I don't know. It's not up to me to decide if we can give that to them anymore. I guess that falls back to you. But I said, the lacrosse program's only signed up nine kids this year. Baseball's program's signed up five. And the cooking class is only signed up seven, whereas last year, we had two classes of fifteen. So, I think it's across the board, it's not just the summer camp program.
So, what are you charging for cooking?
Sixty dollars for four-day sessions, so it's like fifteen dollars a day. And, yeah, all those are reasonably priced. Yeah, we were just trying to make ends meet, you know, given the budget restraints that we had. We weren't trying to, and we weren't ever charging Sandy Woods's a hundred and forty a week, where we're a hundred a week.
I know, but some people can't afford a hundred and forty.
I know.
I think the program became a place where it was reasonable. They needed the childcare, maybe not for the full eight hours. But this was, the people who could not afford, Sandy Woods and Sakana were using this. And we did go up from seventy-five dollars to seven hundred dollars. That's a big...
Right, and we didn't have the luxury of the offering two weeks at a time because of the sort of, if the attendance varies from one-two week session to the next-two week session, what do you do? Do you lay off your help? You know, I mean, those kids were depending on summer jobs. Or do you run it at an improper, you know, unsafe ratio? And, you know, it just really comes down to if you want to subsidize the cost of the program. I show the numbers at a hundred dollars a week, I believe we would do okay. It costs seven thousand for two employees, to staff twelve kids, you need two people. So, that would cost you seven thousand for the summer. So, at the current price, we'd take in seventy-three hundred, so you don't lose money. If you go down to seventy-five dollars a week, you start losing money. If you go down to fifty dollars a week, you lose three thousand dollars. And so, it's not up to me, it's up to somebody up there. You guys or the minister have to decide if you want to subsidize this program.
We always did.
And if you do, if you want to keep doing that. The other question is, I'm talking with the recreation coordinator, and also the woman who's interested in doing the program. And it's a lot of work to put this together for twelve kids. And we're not even sure if that's a good idea going forward at this point. The woman that we were interested in having run it, she has two other jobs that she's having done wait until tomorrow. So, one other option would be that we table this, we don't run this program this year. We start again next year, see if, you know, people want this program. If they do, they'll let us know. If they don't, I think it's become a dinosaur, you know, for what we can afford.
I think the community wants it from my phone. My phone's been going off the hook.
I think, I think they do too.
I personally don't think that we can run this for only twelve children.
Right.
And that's why I brought it up. What is budgeted? What is their budget? Or how did they manage?
I mean, how did they manage? In the past, they lost a lot of money. I want to use the word "lost a lot of money." In the past, the town was extremely generous in its subsidization of this program, because it included field trips and other things that were rather expensive. And if you took that total expenditure and you divided it by the number of active participants in the program, you came out with a very large number. So, when we're providing services to the people of the town, what we're trying to do is take the taxpayers' dollar and benefit as many people as possible for as low a cost as possible, which took us in a completely different direction. I think the thing that's very important is that the program in the past is an apple, and the program that was conceived for this year is an orange, and it can't be compared, because the notion was, we're going to be much more sensitive to working parents, and make it possible to drop children off and pick them up at times that would be convenient for people who work a standard-along-work day, which was not what happened in the past. And we've come a long way with recreation, because when I started here, we weren't even doing BCL checks of people who were spending all day with children. And money was being spent with very little accountability. So, we're trying to get to a rational basis. Now, if it is the policy decision of the council to subsidize a summer program, that's fine, but we should go into it with eyes wide open that you're going to take twenty or forty thousand dollars, put it into a summer program, run a whole bunch of camps, and you'll never know whether you're going to get thirty-five kids one week and sixty the next. So, you may end up with the classic situation, where you have camp counselors who've been hired, who are sitting around doing very little, producing... hired, who are sitting around doing very little productive activity, which was our observation last year, where we had as many staff in the gymnastics program as we had students. So one on one's a great ratio, but it doesn't make good sense, cost effectively. So, it is a struggle. You know, Keith did a lot of research when he put this place together, because it was a matter of significant discussion back and forth, what would be the right price point for the people of the town. And there was no way that we would have loaded sticker shop, because $75 for the whole summer is just an outrageously low price, it doesn't cover anything, really. So, when we looked at other communities, this price point, $100, was low. It was the lowest that we found in the sample. So even setting the lowest price comparatively, compared to other communities in the neighborhood, we still only get 12 signups. So, as I said earlier, if I had my druthers on, we'd take the money, live up in Granada's beach and make the best show of it that we came at Granada's, and not even bother with the summer rec program. Because my fear is, at this point, if we try to stage any kind of program at any price, you're really going to get the same 12 kids, maybe 15 or 20 kids, but you're not going to be in a position to get to 40 anymore.
Anything from the council? I personally think you will go up.
Well, I think, probably the best recommendation we can have is, have another signup date, set a lower price, and see how you fare. And that lower price has to be significantly lower, because you might as well test the theory. If $50 a week or $25 a week is where you are, then try it and see what you get for participation.
Yeah, I don't think I'll still have my camp director by June 6th. We have June 6th set up for our next date, and then if we don't have a director, we don't have a program.
You're going to change your orange bag into an apple.
I know. If we do, that's what it'll do.
What does the council think?
Do you think, you think it'll be a viable?
I personally think we should lower, this is what I think, that you don't have to, we should lower the price. It was at 7, it was at 7 whatever.
$700.
No, 700. So there has to be some happy medium in there, and maybe try to figure out if, you know, if you don't, I don't know if there's a way we can, but either.
I don't know, I'm tired of picking numbers. It just keeps, this has just been going in circles and it just keeps coming back. And I'm, I mean, honestly, I'm, we've been to the recreation commission, we've been the brunt of the pushback on this, we've been the brush, pushback on the fees, and we try and, you know, correct past grievances for the fields, and now we're getting it all on the summer camp. Pretty soon, we'll come for the beaches, you know, it's like, we're the bad guys, and I'm not going to pick a number.
Let's put it all together.
Yeah, 12 kids, I just, I'm there with, you know, we're not, we're losing our staff, people need to go find other jobs, and if we keep waiting, I mean, we still have, we still have these sports camps, and we would like to continue that until June 6th with all that sign up, I mean, those people are there anymore, and those are camps, programs that we don't lose money on, they're all independent contractors. So if they don't make their money, then it's up to the instructor to decide if they want it, and if, maybe that's the business we should be in, is, is, you know, let other people run their businesses through the town, their activities for the kids through the town, and then it's not at a risk to the town for the budget, so.
We don't have the staff.
Right, then we don't have to do the staff, I know. Then we have food on the fields and then the beaches to take care of, and that is simply for our own lives and not.
Still, I think.
I'd like to hear from you.
It is a public hearing.
Oh, it isn't, I'm sorry.
It isn't, but I would like to speak briefly, because we're running very late.
Good evening, my name is Fran Lima, aka summer grandmother that was at the recreation meeting complaining about the fees. Thank you for that. I was at the meeting for the recreation committee, the last one. First, let me tell you, I was appalled at your chairperson, her rudeness, her arrogance, and her disrespect.
Can you speak about the recreation?
Just so you know, my grandkids, since first grade, have been in recreation, the park. First year, they went to gymnastics, didn't like it. Went to the park program at the Cassett. They had a ball. They, I couldn't even pick them up 10 minutes early. They wanted to be there right till 2:30 because they were having a great time. They would get in my car, their hair would be soaking wet, their faces beet red, but every single day they went, they came home with a smile on their face. This is a service. I've lived in this town over 40 years. My children went to the park recreation, my first generation grandchildren, who are all in their twenties, the oldest in her 30, is 30, and the second generation of grandchildren has started growing since kindergarten there now in sixth grade. It started out at zero. Your kids, it didn't cost you anything. In those days, you didn't have to worry about transporting your kids, they rode their bikes over there. Then it went up to maybe $5. I don't remember how many increments it went out and how many years. It went, since I've had the kids from 35 to 50 to 75, but they enjoyed every single minute of it, every moment. And it wasn't parents that were picking and dropping off those kids. A good 60% of the people dropping off and picking them up were grandparents, they're babysitters. So we're not looking for daycare, we're looking for those kids to have time to play with one another. They played kickball, they played dodgeball, they played wiffleball, they played four square. Some kids sit in the shade, they played with dolls, some kids played board games. It was enjoyable for them. They had lunch, Sandy would have them sit down for their break for 15 minutes in the shade, for their lunch for 30 minutes in the shade. They would have conversation with each other. It was an enjoyable time. It's been a service that this town provided for our children, just like we provide a service for our elderly. Do I think it should be more? Absolutely. But what you're doing is like going to the senior center and saying, no longer will your fee only be $5 a year, your fee is now going up to $500 a year. See how many seniors go back there? These kids enjoyed it, they had a great time. Most of the people that were here, most of them, a lot of them were kids, have left because it's way past their bedtime. But I just think it's, to say that 75 to 80, or 50 to 80 kids average, that took advantage of this and had a great time, is, it's a shame to look at a paper and say that only 12 kids have signed up. What's the reason? Do you think it's possibly the money? It shouldn't be for only wealth, we're not looking for daycare, we're looking for fun for the kids to enjoy some time during the summer months, keep them busy, keep them off TV, playing games, outside, running around, staying healthy. That's what we're looking for, not a daycare. 60% were grandparents that dropped off and picked up, I'm one of them. And they never get, got in my car once, but they didn't have a great time. Sandy that ran the program at the Cassett, and the junior counselors, yeah, did they play kickball right along with the kids? Absolutely. They had a great time doing it, all of the kids. I just feel that you're taking away a service from the kids and the youth in this town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say something real quick, because I'm two of the 12, my two are two of the 12 that signed up.
Oh, okay.
My name is Dana Kurt, I live in Three Whitetail Lane, grew up in Tiverton, went to recreation when I was a kid near the Cassett. My kids love going there. I wouldn't say I was thrilled out of being out of the two out of the 12 with the price increase. Do I understand some of it? Yes. Do I think that we should have been given more time to budget for this? Absolutely. The only reason I even knew that the prices had gone up that much was because Mrs. Lima told me, and then I went on the, you know, the website and I checked it out, and I was trying to explain it to my kids, it's like, you know, one year you buy a pair of sneakers for $75, and you love those sneakers, and next year, you're going to get those same sneakers because they look great, and you expect the price to go up, but not to 700, $700. And I have two, so, yeah, I got the 70 discount, but it's still a lot of money. A couple of quick points I did want to say was, yeah, the price point might be low because we did look into some other summer camps, but we don't even know what it includes. I mean, the other programs, you go and you know exactly what they're going to do, a lot of them include a lunch, this one, we don't really know anything. I did sign up because I really didn't, I mean, my mom's willing to watch the kids all summer, but I really didn't want to have her watch them all day, which is why this is perfect for me, because she can watch them a little bit in the morning and a little bit afternoon. Another point was, somebody said about the working hours, still don't work for me, which is a point I made that very day, was, I work eight to four. So now, I also have to pay $100 per week for the two, but I also have to pay the extra $10 for the extended care, but I work eight to four. So I still need somebody to bring in there in the morning because the camp didn't open up till eight o'clock. So that doesn't really address that complete issue. Somebody said something about, that the town paid for the field trips? I don't know, my kids have been going there for about three years, and we've always paid for our field trips. That, when we went to...
Full price.
Full price, like, maybe like a discounted group rate, but it was still the group rate that when you went to that place's website is what it costs, so that wasn't...
Just clarify, it was the bus that was subsidized.
Okay, well, that's not what you said, okay, okay, I get that. And, you know, I mean, going back to the point of, we just didn't have enough time to get this, I mean, that's a big increase. I mean, really, honestly, and truly, the only reason I'm able to afford it, even in the middle of this year, is because I just got my tax money back. If I hadn't, my kids would have been camp grandma for the entire summer. And I just think, you know, it does need some reconsideration, I mean, I think, you know, $75 was ridiculously low, and I get that, that, you know, I mean, but you also think, hey, one of the perks of living in Tiverton is we have this awesome recreation program that I enjoyed as a kid and my kids enjoy, and I have to say, we went over a lot, I had the brochures, the kids and I were going over all the camps, and they went, but we really like rec, we want to go back to rec, you know, we had so much fun there, we see our friends. And really, I think that's what it should be about, is the kids and taking care of them. So, thank you for your consideration. Thanks.
Hi, Claudia Ness, I would just like to ask the council why they're putting the recreation budget on the people of the town? You know, some, these people cannot afford to pay that much money per week, and you're eliminating, I can't believe I'm talking like Obama, you're eliminating the middle class and the lower class because they can't afford it. You are giving the upper class a chance to go to this recreation. Like Fran said, it's a daycare center, not a recreation center. And I have a question for Susan. Are you asking for the money ahead of time? Someone made the statement the other day that they had to pay for the complete fee...
Two payments.
Ahead of time, two payments. So in other words, if they can't show up, they can't get their money back, they have to pay that?
They got time to do cancellation, there's a cancellation policy.
Okay, because someone from literally told me that, one, their kids go to a camp, but they have to pay ahead of time, and they can't get a rebate on any of the money that they pay in, even though they don't show up?
Right.
Okay, that's, I wanted to clarify that. I don't think that's fair, really. You know, you're asking for people to pay ahead, and then if they can't make it, forget it, you lost your money. That's all I have to say. And you're just, you're just emphasizing the point that the people that can't afford it can't go.
Anything?
Yeah, I...
Come to the microphone, please.
Just to clarify too, as a working parent.
All right, all right. As one of the working parents, it also doesn't work for me because my hours are far before nine o'clock in the morning. And just so you get an idea of the price increase, I have two children in the program, it went from $150 for me to attend, which I didn't go to all of the weeks, because I do take time off during the summer, and I spend long weekends, or I'll take a week off. It went from $150 to $1,400. That's the reason why my children are not attending this year. You know, $350 for the summer, when they go and they don't, you know, it's reasonable. It's definitely, we provide the lunches for them, we pay for the field trips, you know, and I've known Sandy, she's been with my children for quite a few years as well, and I think she's done an excellent job as well.
You need to state your name so Nance will have a better guess.
Kathy Nness.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Limber?
I'll make this very, very brief. While a number of people have commented that what we're giving is unfair, it isn't the town council. Believe me, I would be happy to make sure that your kids' programs in the summer are properly subsidized. I don't have that luxury, and the other people on this town council don't have that luxury. We're told by the voters, and we were told last week by the voters, what we can spend, and we have to spend within those limits. You heard earlier today a discussion about hiring additional legal counsel. I don't know if that's going to cool us, but assuming that it proceeds on the zoning board level, it proceeds on the superior court level, it proceeds in the supreme court level, you're talking about tens of thousands of dollars. The alternate budget that the people of Tiverton voted for, which you, just a week ago, told us that we could cut $50,000 from the litigation line item, $50,000. We haven't even hit the fiscal year yet, and we, I fully expect, we probably have another $50,000 that we're going to have to come up with. Mr. Souza has an item under G, under G5, in which he's requesting the replacement of windows at the senior center, and I believe it's worth $32,000. We don't make those decisions, the people in Tiverton are making those decisions. You tell us what the line items are, you tell us where the cuts are, and we have to work within that.
He opened up the door.
No, 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 no more.
He opened up the door.
No discussion. No, Madeline.
It's not, it's not right to not let the people speak. When he's saying something that's...
No discussion.
Town council has the ability to...
The money is on everybody's hands.
Can I add one more point? As Mrs. Odell wanted to say, the town council has money to move around. We can move it around, but we're always stuck with the same amount of money, and that's what we have to move around for the next 12 months. And it's that money that you gave us at the FTR. All we're working with is the budget that we receive, that's it. If you can tell me how I can come up with more money for a recreation program, I'd be happy to listen. But tonight...
You were giving more in the recreation for the director and an assistant director. Last year, I believe, I don't have to write in writing paper and...
I'm going to, I'm going to end it this way, I try, I'm going to, I'm going to end it this way. I tried to make it clear that we have X amount of money. I expect tonight, tonight, between the senior center discussion that we'll have later today, and the additional course that council that we're going to have to have this coming year, we've just added another 70, 80, 90,000 dollars. Where do we come up with that money? If we're not given the money by the FTR? It isn't enough to say we have a giant balloon and we can move it around forever. Eventually, we'll run out of the money.
Susan, the program costs $7,000, right? It's 3,500 per employee, 7,000?
Um, no, that's, yeah, that was hiring four people.
So what would be the cost to run this program?
Oh, um, I think it's $1,000 a week.
$1,000 a week for seven weeks?
That's the minimum.
Okay, well, if you charge $150 and 50 kids sign up...
Your staffing goes through, that's, it's a sliding scale.
One to eight.
You can't just have two people running a program of fifty.
Well, what did it run, what did, okay, let me put this in all the way.
Tell me, come up there.
Yeah. What did it cost last year to run the program with the sixty kids?
Um, I think it was about six thousand last year, if I recall.
So you think...
Six thousand, we had, we had like sixty kids, just somewhere between fifty and sixty kids signing up and their average of thirty-five to forty a day that showed up. We hired enough people, the staff, like they were strong.
It would cost six thousand dollars?
Yeah. But I think that they had a lot of volunteers last year. We don't have volunteers this year. So they, they've been supplementing it with like twelve-year-olds volunteers and we wanted to get away from that and hire high school and college age kids and pay them.
Did the volunteers work though? The twelve-year-old volunteers work?
Yes, they did.
And there was no problem? Although, what I'm saying is also...
But we're trying to structure it differently. We're using twelve-year-olds.
I think we tried to fix something that wasn't broken. That's what I think. That's just my opinion. I think we tried to fix something that wasn't broken. And if it cost us six thousand dollars for, for that amount of kids, and we were using twelve-year-old volunteers, or if you think about that was something for those twelve-year-olds to do also, to go and watch the kids, and if there wasn't a problem with it, then why did we fix it? Because it seemed to be what the needs of...
Because we wanted to develop it into a true recreation program.
I don't know if that's what Tibbetan wanted though.
But some people don't want, yeah.
It's also easy to blame Monday morning quarterback now that the deal is done.
Well, that's right. We, we, we all made the mistake. We all made the decision.
Well, I wouldn't say that.
Well, I feel I did. I felt that I didn't think it out enough. And that's just my opinion. All I know is that there's a lot of upset people that use the program, they're no longer going to, and only twelve people have been interested in. So we didn't meet the needs. We changed it, but we obviously didn't meet the needs. So we need to fix it. Or get rid of it. It's, it's the way. So, what I figured is if you charge a hundred and fifty and fifty kids show up, that's seventy-five hundred dollars. Am I right? And it would cost how much?
Madam President, may I ask, the, the fees were set by a resolution. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we'll have to. I know. I know.
Right, so the second child paid five twenty-five for the summer instead of seven hundred.
I mean, I liked the theory, Susan, I really did, and I thought it was a good concept, but obviously, we don't have enough people.
Well, that's, also, that was based on five hours and so that six thousand is based on five hours worth of, that was twenty-five hours a week and we're talking from eight AM to five PM, was that nine hours? So we're talking forty-five hours a week. So we're going from twenty-five to forty-five hours a week. So we're dou- almost doubling the nine hours. So I've got a...
We can add to the regular hours. I don't know. I don't know if it's too late.
I know.
Since I know anyway.
Does the commission have anything to say about it? Or, I don't, I don't know. I mean, this is all gonna be decided without our group coming to agreement if we want to, to go forward with the program. I don't know if we should have a say or we're just gonna go with what we told.
But I guess I do not want you to go forward this program with twelve kids. I think it's a big waste of money.
Yeah, I think it's a big waste of our time. I mean, it's a lot of effort. It's a lot of effort. And we feel bad about the kids that we were trying to, you know, serve and we were trying to start a new program approaching New York. That's why...
When is your next meeting?
First week of the, first week of our next member, but we're gonna have, we're gonna have signups again on June sixth. And we've been, we've left registration open.
Yeah, I know.
But they're, they're just not coming in. So, for whatever reason.
I mean, you can all disagree with me and I, I don't have a problem with it.
It's not about disagreeing. It's just that the town council only has the authority to set a fee schedule. The recreation commission doesn't work for the town council. It works for the town administrator.
That's why it's just gonna suggest.
And they're a body that only makes recommendations.
I was gonna suggest that you go back to your group, but it's what I mean. It's just my opinion.
Can I add one second question? Just some of the comments I received from some of the parents asking why the town doesn't use high school kids that need community service credits. Uh, you know, I guess, I'm not sure. I mean, you know, I, I've seen, you know, going through the Corey House. I mean, I've seen groups, you know, actually, you get, so I know that it could be done. It takes a coordination of between the school department and, uh, but I think we need more, you know, cooperation between RAC and our, you know, school committee to try to get those kids to, to, you know, come into that rec and it, I think that could be an answer. I don't know if they're gonna be able to salvage this year. I can't, but...
But it is a program that you offer community service.
But the bottom line is, I mean, I think we need to find ways to do things cheaper. And if, if the kids can earn their credits, you know, by teaching a class and something they enjoy doing in high school, taking on their kids, I, it just seems to me, when I got, you know, multiple parents asking me why we're not doing that, I just gotta figure, you know, if the parents themselves, I think it's a good idea.
I believe they did community service last year.
Um, any other discussion from the council?
I just think it's a good idea to go back and kind of revisit this.
Reevaluate.
Reevaluate it. Um, 'cause I, I, I agree with you. I wouldn't go along with just twelve, twelve participants. That's, it's a waste of money.
Well, then we obviously didn't. We, we tried. It was a good effort, but obviously, we haven't mentioned needs of the community.
I'm sure if we lower the rate, you're gonna get a lot more participants.
I think you will, but that's just from, that's what I think.
I will just say that I am not in the business of running recreation. I don't have, don't purport to be an expert in the field, but, um, I do support the policies that the recreation commission recommends, the administrator administrates, administers, and the town council implements. And, you know, it's, it's fine to say that, uh, well, first of all, we're not, we're not, it's not a waste, I don't think it's a waste of money to run a program for twelve kids if we're talking about a break even at twelve kids. If it's gonna cost us seven thousand dollars and we're gonna have taken revenue of seventy-three, fifty, and then we're providing those twelve kids with something.
It's a lot of work.
And also, the rest of the community's not benefiting from our programs.
It's June, it's almost June. Do you think we're gonna have a whole heck of a lot of, right? Then we'll cobble something together like we do and have done in the past. And I think that what's lost in this is, it wasn't a desire to be malicious towards the, the students or lower-income families or anything like that. The recreation commission was tasked with a very noble endeavor of making their operations at least a little bit more self-sufficient. Because losing money, and not, it's not losing money, but they, they operate in, in a, in an area where they generate less money than they expend by a large margin. And that just isn't a sustainable method of providing services. So this was their crack at it. This was their decision.
And I'm not criticizing that. I think it was a good effort. I really am not criticizing. I just feel, and obviously...
It's time for a plan B.
It's time for another plan because there are people that count it on this every summer. And they don't have it because they can't afford it. And I understand that. So, I don't know. I would, I would like you to bring it back. This is my opinion. I would like you to bring it back and see what your commission thinks. If they say, no, we don't wanna run the program, no, we don't wanna decrease the fees for all of yours. Or, or not. I mean, it's up to you. I don't know what to do with this program.
If it's my call, I'd go back and see whether we can sign up on a lower fee. Keith wanted twenty. Just in the outcry, you have tonight, you might get to twenty. But I'm gonna be very specific with the council, with everybody still here assembled. Recognize this is a subsidy, that the town's providing a service to its people. And if you start, if you close your eyes and you swing your axe without thinking about where that axe is gonna fall, these are the debates you're gonna have over and over and over again. The services you provide to vulnerable populations, our children and our seniors, cost money. And even if you find volunteers and they do everything as cheaply as possible, believe me, spend every moment of every day trying to do that. You still have to spend some money. And if we get cut to the point where we have to move money to just do the basic administrative necessity of the town, defend the town in court, for instance, then unfortunately, it's only discretionary subsidies that remain on the table that you actually can move the money around. None of it is contractually obligated or is a necessary service or set of goods that we have to buy from vendors, whether it's salt or sand or any of the other expenditures that we have to go through every year. And as you approach that breaking point, the stress will come on programs like recreation where you're just trying to reduce the subsidy. I know we're talking about break even. I know we're talking about maybe returning to the tens. It wasn't the point. The point was to reduce the subsidy to this function. So all I'm saying is, we will once again, in six short months, be back in the budget process. And I intend to come back with a reduced budget and with a substantial set of funds set aside for recreation. And I hope you have the support to defend the program.
Okay, so this, I know you're not, I don't know.
Well, I don't know where to go, but...
Do you want me to see what the consensus is about it?
What we need, Susan, is a substantial publications effort to get the word out. So I think we need to spend the night sleeping on it before sleeping on it. To think about the price, that price point that you wanna try to hit. And I would, I'm, I, the number fifty a week keeps sticking in my head because you can't spend fifty dollars a week on your kid. I, I, I don't know. So, you know, that's two hundred dollars a month for two months, four hundred dollars. And see how many additional signups you get and prove on the website and we'll talk to the media and we'll try to get some news coverage and we'll try to spread the word around.
And are you saying you want a minimum enrollment or are you saying no matter what?
Well, I think at twelve, I mean, Keith said twenty.
Keith said twenty. Are our kids gonna have fun if there's only twelve of them in a group? I don't know.
Well, it depends on which twelve. I have twelve kids in a ball club. They love each other. So, yeah.
Right, right. So, okay.
So you'll be making a profit with what you're saying? You'll be making money?
No, we're just gonna lower the price and try to increase enrollment. You know, it's basic microeconomics. We're gonna lower the price and see if demand...
Fifty dollars a week.
Yeah.
Right, but you need more people. So you're paying more in the salary. You're right. I got you. I'm not gonna lose money.
Okay.
Do we need to change that? We'll need to reconsider your, your fee schedule. The fee schedule, correct.
And it's on the agenda to do with our own money. I mean, if you're willing to give us...
If they come back with it.
Yeah, once they come back with it, then we can adjust.
When does recreation...
I would say reconsider the vote tonight, set it at fifty and see what we get. I'll make the motion to set the fee at fifty dollars.
We have two motions. We need a vote to reconsider and then you need a vote to change the favor. The only person that can, only person who can't make that motion is Joe because he voted against it. He has to be on the prevailing side to reconsider a motion.
Right.
Yeah. I'm just saying, the only person who can't make that motion is Joe.
Oh, can't make it, cannot. Okay. I have a question. Three fifty times, it's, it's three hundred and fifty dollars then for the program instead of seven hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I make a motion to reconsider the vote.
Second.
All those in favor?
Let's go and check my breath first.
To reconsider the vote, we need a motion.
I opposed unanimous. There was some unanimous, correct, and I'm not sure about...
I, I voted in favor to be used to say.
That's what I saw.
As a move.
So I had to make sure I could vote first.
Now we need a motion.
What was it? A motion? I'm sorry, I didn't get, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Just a motion to reconsider.
To reconsider?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and now I need another motion for the fee.
I'll make a motion that we decrease the fee to fifty dollars.
A week?
And are we gonna do a discount for siblings?
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna do a discount for siblings?
Well, since I'm pulling numbers out of the air as we go along, twenty-five dollars for the additional siblings. Twenty-five dollars for the additional siblings. Seventy-five a week if you have two kids. It's satisfied for two kids.
All right, do I have a second?
No second.
Discussion, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Are those three in favor? All those opposed? I think we should go rest.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, at this point, I'm not gonna make recommendations. I'll have to set the price.
Let's just close it down.
I think everyone's gonna have to try to, uh, make it a little more powerful for those that might...
I, I would like to...
We have to cover costs.
But that's covering more than costs. Because what you're saying is not making any sense, Susan. Last year, you said you had sixty kids and it cost you six thousand dollars.
I was trying to remember, yeah.
Okay, so, but you're telling me...
There were volunteers.
Because, because there were a lot more employees.
There were volunteers?
There weren't four employees. I don't remember how many there were.
But could you do volunteers again? But it's, it's late now.
They're probably like Asian boys or something.
The, the reason, and I'm gonna speak for Susan because she's sitting in the audience. The reason, um, wasn't to pay employees, wasn't just to replace the volunteers. It was to provide a, a higher quality of services, structured, um, program that included some, you know, I wouldn't say intensive, but more than just, um, you know, go and do your own thing and maybe get a kickball game going. And so, so that was, my, pretty much on, so... I mean, the structure is gonna be what the administrator and the recreation director and commission have come up with, I guess. If you, you know, if we are setting fees and that's really all we have the authority to do, then, you know, they'll figure it out. And whether it works or it doesn't work, I think is upon, is upon, right? You know?
But if we let it go, then, then we don't let it.
He don't wanna set fees, apparently.
No, we set lower fees. Brett doesn't want it. I'm with Denise, but it's lower.
If we set a fee and, you just wanna let it go.
To make it, make it to seventy-five dollars. I will, I will reduce the fee to whatever number you come up with because as far as I'm concerned, it shouldn't be any fee at all. It should be a service of the town. And so if you can come up with ten bucks, I'd be happy with that.
How about two hundred dollars for the program? You've more than doubled it. That's twelve thousand.
At this point, I'm indifferent because now you're just talking about the size of the subsidy. It doesn't matter. You said the subsidy is larger than you would like it. It's not, all I said before was please defend your subsidy. So when coming to the budget process, it sounds like, this is actually twenty miles spent because this is about priorities and whether or not services to the children of the town are gonna be a priority. So when you have this type of budget tension, there has to be a group of people in this town, I'm not gonna look into the audience, but everybody who's involved in recreation and who's deeply involved with the children of the town, to defend a budget that funds your programs. So that's, so it doesn't matter to me how big the subsidy is. Put it back to seventy-five dollars for the whole summer and see how many kids sign up. If you do the same program we've always had, if you have sixty kids signing up, it's forty-five hundred dollars a month to partially offset the cost of the program. But at the end of the day, there will be net cost to the town if I deserve.
Which I...
And there's nothing wrong with that. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that. Just know that you explicitly what you're doing.
That decision whatsoever, because I think that our priority should be the children of this town and the seniors of this town. And that's where my priority is and we will try, I think it's, I'll make a motion, two hundred dollars for the entire purpose, seven weeks.
All seven bucks.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor? No, it's only three. Can't do it. I'm gonna have to move on and do nothing unless, unless you can come up with something for the next meeting. for the next meeting, if you two want to put your heads together, or not, but, um...
The fee structure stands.
Yeah, that's what I mean, the fee structure stands. Okay, I'm moving on. I think a lot of these people have left. Appointments and resignations are counsel to vacancies, two-year term for fifteen, two thousand seventeen, James Palatier. He stayed with us. Did you fall asleep? Just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to be on this committee.
Well, I was in this room a week ago, on Sunday, a very, very nice festive activity, and I think that anyone who participates in that kind of activity can't but be innovated by the, by the spirit. And I was told that there was a dire need, a parliamentary need, for another person on the Arts Council in order that votes might be taken, so that they could be a quorum for voting. And it was presented to me that perhaps I might like to consider presenting my name in nomination, and hence I did. I've always been interested in arts. I, as you probably have seen in my very brief note, I was the president of the Forum Symphony, one of directors for ten years, and actually way back at the, before many of you were on the planet, I guess, way back when the battleship came in to Fall River, I was one of the inaugural members of the USS Massachusetts Memorial Committee. And those are very, very, those are arts, if you like, they're physical, that's a, that's a floating, floating museum, if you will. And I continue, I founded the, back in the, many years ago, back in nineteen fifty-seven or so, again, before some of you were on the planet, that I founded the Massachusetts Region Three Science Fair, and I continue to serve as president of that, and that's arts and science, if you will. So that, I'd like to, first of all, come to the assistance of the Arts Council, but not only just come to the assistance, I'd like to participate if they'll permit me to, and constructively contribute to the organization. Hence...
Thank you very much. I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we appoint James Palatier of one oh four Ironfield Drive to a two-year term to the Arts Council, term expiring four fifteen, twenty seventeen, and thank you for volunteering.
Motion being made, and second, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cemetery Commission, Robert Vieira, is two vacancies, three-year term to four fifteen, two thousand eighteen. Is Robbie Vieira here? He's seeking the appointment.
I make a motion to reappoint Robert Vieira of Johnny Renault Ave, Renault Ave, to the Cemetery Commission for a three-year term, expiring on four fifteen, twenty eighteen.
Second. Motion being made, and second, all those in favor? Any unanimous? Cemetery Commission, two vacancies, three-year term, four fifteen, two thousand and eighteen, Joseph S. Perry, I know he's not here. This, this is the new request. Would we like to table this until Mr. Perry comes, or would we like to make a motion?
I spoke to Mr. Perry. I'll make the motion to appoint Joseph C. Perry Jr. to the Cemetery Commission for a three-year term.
Motion been made, and second, all those in favor? Opposed? Historical Cemetery Commission, three vacancies, three-year terms to four fifteen, two thousand eighteen, James L. Spears Jr., four ninety-four Western Millard Drive, seeking reappointment. He couldn't make it. I'd like to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to appoint...
I'd like to make motion to reappoint James L. Spears to the Historical Cemetery's Commission for a three-year term ending four fifteen, twenty eighteen.
Second.
All those in favor? Zoning Board of Review, one vacancy, five years, that's the one, I know. Go ahead, Nancy.
The zoning board of review was put on the agenda too soon, that hasn't been advertised. I did speak to, Mr. Taylor is still here, so he, he'll probably come before the council. And Mr. Al Zabak was here, but explained it would have to be on the second meeting in June, because that, that board policy, that has to be advertised.
So both the E and F?
Yes, I've...
And one further, but I spoke to Mr. Al Zabak, he indicates that the position he's seeking is first alternate, not second alternate.
So we'll try.
Those first and second alternate will come up for reappointment, and then you can appoint them however you choose them.
Given our hearing board...
Dick Taylor's here, if you want to...
Yeah, but we can't.
We can have him, if you want.
Okay. Mr. Taylor. Oh, yeah, I didn't even know you were here, Mr. Taylor. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
So you got penalized for being a...
Oh, yeah.
Trying to get paperwork done.
Madam President, members of the council, my name's Dick Taylor, I'm here seeking reappointment to the zoning board for a five-year term. For the last thirty-five years, I've pretty much continuously been on committees and boards and one thing or another. Much of it in land use. The, I started out as the chairman of the Conservation Commission for seven years. During that time, I was environmental advocate for the planning board, and I walked every piece of property that came before the planning board for seven years. So I'm pretty familiar with the town. I was on the committee that drafted the first comprehensive plan, and subsequently to that, the zoning to support it. I was on the commission that drafted the charter originally, and the five-year update to that. The last twelve years, I've been on the zoning board, and I think I'm not suited for that, I'm familiar with the town. The problems, the petitions just get harder and harder. We're running out of land that can just be developed in accordance with zoning. More and more people have to have a relief of some type in order to work. You know, we've seen, we've gone through the conversion of fishing shacks into homes and in the watershed, and one thing or another, so there's just a lot of that. So I think I have a lot of corporate memory and history, and you can have it for free.
Thank you. Thank you very much. As you heard, we are going to repost it and advertise, Mr. Taylor. Appointment Group C, Juvenile Hearing Board, two vacancies, three-year term to October fifteen, two thousand and eighteen, Patricia Myers, two eleven Jensen Street, seeking reappointment. Is Patrick, I'm very s- I'm getting really tired. Is Patrick Myers here?
No.
Okay.
Can I just have a question? These are through October fifteenth? Are these also...
Right. This year, we're going to get every, this, hopefully by the October appointments this year, we will have completed all the cycles from when the...
Oh, I see, these were original appointments.
Right, so now we're...
So now we're up on reappointments.
It will be in October, so when you see these odd dates, it's because the boards and commission policy, we used to have everything due, all appointments on June thirtieth, but we started to stagger them to get them through this process, so you're not appointing a whole two sheets in. So after October this year, every...
Will be caught up.
Department should be in its proper, every board should have its proper expiration.
I sat with Nancy for about a half hour going over all of this, when they expired, when they don't, who expires, who doesn't, and from what I got is Group A, which is, as we appointed before, are all Aprils, and Group B are all Julies, and then you'll have Groups C's will be all Octobers.
You can blame Nancy, myself, and Rob Colton.
Remember, all this is vacancies, and we'll advertise to get them, so they're unexpired terms, and that puts them in their date.
That's a great way of doing it.
I'd like to entertain a motion, does anyone want to reappoint Patrick Myers?
I'll second that.
Oh, I need the motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Patrick Myers, Juvenile Hearing Board, seeking reappointment.
Do I have a second?
For three years. Second.
All those in favor? Historic Preservation Advisory Board, one vacancy, three-year term, ten fifteen, eighteen, Rachel Elder, seeking reappointment. We lost Rachel, too, she just didn't make it. Would someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Rachel Elder, three sixty-four Highland Road, seeking reappointment for Historical Preservation Advisory Board, three years.
Motion being made, and second, all those in favor? Street Advisory Committee, three vacancies, two-year terms to four fifteen, seventeen, Audrey Gladdy, one ninety-five Crandall Road, seeking reappointment.
She sent a memo, could not attend tonight.
Jim Odell, one thirty Warren Avenue, seeking reappointment.
My man's almost asleep.
Yeah, I know.
Few hours past my bedtime.
Jim, just briefly, why you want to go back on the street committee?
It's a thankless job, but I'm a glutton for punishment. I have made no secret of my beliefs, that I think a lot of the problem with the street classification in town, part of it's due to poor record-keeping of the past. I'm looking very forward to a presentation coming up soon from Councilor Lambert on a solution that I agree with about ninety-nine percent of it. I think it'll, it'll go a long way in solving the street classification problem in town, I'd like to participate in it.
Thank you.
And I did come up with the estimates for Cynthia Ave that I said I was going to come up with. I think you remember me saying that you'd be pleasantly surprised, the high bid was forty-six thousand.
You can discuss that with Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
I move that we reappoint Audrey Gladri, 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 one ninety-five Crandall Road, for a two-year term to the Street Advisory Committee, term ending four fifteen, seventeen.
Motion being made, and second, all those in favor? Opposed?
I move that we reappoint Jim Odell, one thirty Warren Ave, to the Street Committee for a two-year term, expiring four fifteen, twenty seventeen.
Motion being made, and second, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, passes. Right.
The vote fails.
It fails.
Fail. Madam President, I'd just like to take...
Let's do all those in favor again.
In favor?
Yes. Opposed?
I think it's safe.
And I'm, I'm going to abstain, and I'd like to make a comment.
It fails.
Fails.
My concern, and I'll be very brief, the concern I have at this point with the Street Advisory Committee, and having anybody appointed to it, is that at some point, we get a recommendation that a street has to be taken over, that it has to be an accepted street, and we have to assume the obligation, the legal obligation, the financial obligation, to bring it into code or whatever, whatever condition we, we think is appropriate. I don't think we have the money. Remember, we're now going to be hearing from the Street Committee twice a month for the next year, and I have no idea at all how many of those streets will have a recommendation that we, as a town, take over and finance the repair of those streets. My suggestion would be essentially to make the Street Advisory Committee at this point inactive, unless we can, unless we can come up with some assurance that we have the money for these projects, or two, more importantly, that we actually come up with a plan as a town to address all of these unaccepted streets. Barring that, I, I don't see any, any reason for a Street Advisory Committee at this point. Now, Jim Odell has just indicated, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, we have a, a low price of forty-two thousand dollars for the last street that was recommended, is that what, forty, what was it?
Forty-nine thousand.
Yeah, whatever, whatever it is. My point, my point is, what do we do if, in two weeks from now, we get another recommendation to take in yet another street, and the recommendation is, ah, it's a low number, it's only forty-nine thousand, it's only forty-two thousand dollars? Exactly where do we come up with that money? Until I have some assurance that we can address the financial end of this problem, I don't see any reason to support the, an advisory committee, or put any people on an advisory committee. We're simply asking for a recommendation that we wouldn't be in the position to follow through on.
Well, I think that's a whole nother agenda item for another night, if you all agree with me. Yeah, we'll put it on the next agenda. Unfinished business, Kate Michel, Planning Board's administrative, did Kate leave Administrative Office Memorandum Regarding Town Council Referral for Council Action? Is Kate still here?
No, she isn't.
So, so do you want to continue, or do you want to present it?
We would like to...
It's up to you.
Continue it.
Would you like to continue?
What it is, we've got a meeting today.
Mark, come to the microphone.
We had a meeting today with the principals of Fort Polynice, and we're trying to just dig up more information to get all kinds of report for the council, so we'll continue that through our meetings.
Okay.
That's what we should do.
Do I need a motion to continue?
Just a minute, so any better for the...
Yes, we're going to continue it.
We provided the information that the request that came in from the chair of Planning Board was not in furtherance of the vote taken by the Planning Board. The Planning Board voted to approve the proposed amendment.
Yeah, I'm not hearing this right now, we're going to continue it, listen to the next meeting, when Kate is here, when they have a recommendation for us, okay?
The recommendation was presented, Mr. Paul.
No, 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 we're going to, we're going to, we're going to continue, we need Kate, Kate, it's Kate's, Kate isn't here. They said, our planner said, they're still needing to get information together, so this will be continued. Town Administrator requests approval.
We make a vote to continue, make a vote to continue the Kate Michel's Planning Board Administrative Officer, and, I'm going to have a council for, for council action.
E one, E one. Mark, you're being...
To the next meeting.
To the next meeting.
You're going to have the information by then, do you think, Mark?
Yes, sir.
Motion being made, and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Town Administrator requests approval of easements to the city following regarding sewer project in Hickox Street area approaching south of Tuppercombe.
Madam President, just by way of introduction, City of Fort Polynice intends to extend sewer service, which President Sidney Long, the shoreline himself, with Tuppercombe, requires him to cross streets to lay an activity. Some negotiation is going back and forth, and about legal council failure and details. I think the bottom line is, the DPW director defended the interest of the town, and we extracted an expectation that these streets that have been touched would be griffed curb to curb to the stages of the town activity, and I think we've reached that level of satisfaction, so I would recommend amusement.
I can say that at this point in time, we have agreed to everything within the easements, except the insistence on that language in there, that it be curb to curb with repave, and I believe we're going to reach agreement on that, and you may have already, I, I just know in the last email, so it's on.
This is not different, any different than any other utility that does work in our town, just because it's another town in another state, it's still really a utility company that's putting utility in, and under our permit requirements with the DPW for street opening, it's one of the requirements we require all the time. It's our participation, and we're going to pay for half of the paving that's done in tibetan, because the roads are complete in us, and we're just, I just want a mechanism to secure that Fall River will come back and pave curb to curb. Once they install utilities, their plan is the utility section leaves, and at some other point in time, their roadway section comes in and puts out a contract. Well, what if the mayor decides that maybe a downtown street needs to be repaired rather than some street on the outskirts, like Lake? So I would want reassurance in some form of a bond, a security, that will guarantee at the end of the job that we end up with a road that's paved from curb to curb, and we have a new road instead of trenches down them. That's all. And I haven't seen that yet, I don't believe.
So you haven't achieved that?
I haven't seen that in writing anywhere.
Received all of the oral commitments, and it is now just agreeing on the language within the easement.
Well, and more property oral commitments are worth the wind that they were spoken upon, so we need to continue this one, Madam President, till we get the necessary-
Some writing, yes.
The fact that you've discussed it and now approved it on this basis is actually important for us. Okay.
I need a motion to continue this item.
Just one question. By them putting the sewers in along this road, do our Tippin residents tie in?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good.
I think the whole Hancock Street, right, it's the bottom end.
Correct. But it is vitally important that we defend this interest, because as you well know, councilman, after the winter, the Hancock Street was tore up terrible, so.
Yeah. Once you pass the senior-
Okay, I need a motion to continue.
Motion to continue, item G.
No, it's E two.
Second.
Motion remain second. All those in favor? New business, Chief Lloyd requests to purchase a used two thousand and one Chevy Tahoe from Dartmouth Fire District Number One for a fire prevention office. Thirty-five hundred dollars from account thirty-three ten seven six four oh.
We've had a fire prevention car before that I, a two thousand, that I had bought for two thousand dollars. The car was taken off the road red tag because it had body rot on it. We have no vehicle now for the fire prevention officer. We've searched around, and found one, Dartmouth Fire District had it. I've had the mechanic look at it, it's in very good shape, has no rot on it. They wanted forty-five hundred. I asked them if they would take thirty-five hundred. They did say they would take it. I'm taking it out of my apparatus maintenance account, which right now, as of the next month, has a balance of nineteen thousand one hundred and nine dollars in it. I need to get a vehicle to, and use to do his inspections.
Question for the administrator, please?
Yes, Joe. Go ahead.
Matt. Well, on our, I guess past practice has been what we've done is we've taken the police cars that come out of service and have been used for, you know, building officials who have been using a car, a tax collector. So I know we're purchasing another two cars this year, so means we have two more coming. Why do we need to purchase something? Why can't this just be one of the used police cars if everybody else is using?
I don't know that any are available.
Well, we got two coming, buying two more. And we just bought three last year, so I'm sure there's quite a few old police cars floating around. What are you doing with your own cars?
I don't know. I just, I came forward because I have no car for this gentleman. I have to have a car for him. I got to get a car in.
Please to probably help you.
Yeah, whatever.
We're having to replace two cars. But be advised, some of the cars we are decommissioning, if you will. Transmissions are bad, and other things are bad in the vehicles. So if there's something that they can get that has some use for the fire department, I mean, that's Bob's forte, but I'm telling you, the police cars that we're getting rid of, the decommissioning, they're shot. And we do use them, but not for emergency vehicles. Maybe we might use them for the senior center or something of that nature, DPW, if they're not going out. But any emergency vehicle, I recommend, these are at the end of their life expectancy.
The consideration is the fire marshal puts a lot of miles on his vehicle. Unless he's traveling, crisscrossing the town, constantly doing inspections and reviews. It needs to be a roadworthy vehicle. If we're going to spend as much to repair a shot-up old cruiser as we would to buy a reasonably decent shaped car. The two thousand and one? It's a two thousand and one. I mean, the police car is a newer. And to see the wheels idle doesn't mean-
Have we had this-
Do you know how much idle time a cruiser spends? I'd like to actually have a list of how many cars we have available. Down at Public Works Garage, wherever.
Have we had this two thousand and one car inspected?
Yes, we have.
And it's-
Well, you saw the mechanic has gone over, looked at it. It's in service now in Dartmouth. He's looked at, and it's in good shape. There's no rot in it. He highly recommends purchasing it. It also has all the emergency lights, the sirens, and everything else. If we take a police car, we have to reload it, we have to do all that, we have to put all the emergency lights back on the car.
For fire inspections?
Yes.
It's an emergency vehicle. It's part of the emergency response stuff.
It goes back, it goes back when there's fires.
Yes, once the fire is ended.
Right. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to. It's a two thousand and one. I'd like to see something newer. And looking at your budget, chief. The apparatus needs, you have, from what I'm seeing, twenty thousand five eleven. Is that going to be what was left by the window this year?
I'm not sure if we still have two or cover some overtime that's left to.
The answer is yes. This account has been frozen to cover what little deficit is remaining in your overtime account. Okay, that's fine. Because I would say take it out of whatever account you can and buy a car. If it makes anybody feel better, Paul is the town's mechanic. If he's looked at this truck and he knows the cruisers, have him recommend the best of the three vehicles and come back to me, Steve, whatever.
Well, either that or do I have, whether you would like to make a motion, or would you like to go without that?
I don't have a recommendation.
I move that we authorize the chief to purchase a Chevy Tahoe from Dartmouth Fire District for thirty-five hundred dollars from account three-three-one-zero-seven-six-four-zero.
Second.
Motion remain second. All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
You're still here.
Chief Lloyd, don't go away.
It's late, the hour's late.
I know. Request approval for sole, sole source purchase of Scott Airpack firefighting ear bottles and Scott base pieces from Shipman Fire Equipment of Waterford, Connecticut.
I had come to you once before and asked about this. I was trying to purchase it on a master price agreement, and the solicitor was saying at the time that that was not viable. So I called Scott Aviation, because Scott Aviation is the sole source, is what we use as breathing apparatus. I can't go to any other type. They only have two dealers in this area that can even, if we went out to bid, can even bid on it. I've called both of those distributors, told them exactly what I needed and what I was looking for, and they gave, each gave me a quote. I broke it down per item, because depending on where we're going, the monies that we have available to do it, what we can purchase. So I'm asking is, and I'm sure the solicitor would have to say, is I'm looking to see if I can do that as a sole source.
Because of the trademark of that, yes, that is correct.
And this was money that was appropriated at the last, not this current, the previous Capitol plane, that's twenty-five thousand dollars.
Do you have a motion?
Move that we authorize the purchase of Scott air packs and firefighting ear bottles and Scott base pieces from Shipman's Fire Equipment of Waterford, Connecticut.
Second.
Motion remain second. All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sues a discussion and possible vote to go for replacement of windows at the senior center.
Well, I'm going to first refer to the list that was given to the council January twenty-second is the date on it. It's a list of all the roads that the buildings in town had. If you go down through for the senior center, notice that you don't see a septic system on here. The septic system in the senior center, I mean, we've known it's needed to be replaced. I mean, I'm going back to Don Bowlen sitting as president, and we kind of instituted a program. And at that time, it was pumped, I guess, and we were able to take it over to the high school and dispose of it when we still had the sewer treatment plant over there, I guess. I understand we had some problems over there, but if we had stuck to that program, that we had regular pumpings. But with the state coming down, mandating that all cesspools are removed, I think we have a better chance at getting a community development block grant to replace that septic system, if need be. Because of that, the state coming down mandating that all septic, so that's the reason why I'm still looking to move toward replacing the windows with the money that was appropriated by the FTR. The windows have been a priority for years. We've got water leaking into the walls over there, which is going to cost further deterioration. And the savings we would realize in heat alone, I think, over the next few years will almost cover the costs, and I think that's part of the reasons why that I think there was a push to get the windows done this year. Obviously, the exterior of the building is important. And I realize that there's some concern with the septic system, but then again, I think we have a better chance. And I mean, recently, we had talked about, well, Sunday sewers will run down that way, but I think inevitably, we're going to end up putting a septic system over there. But I think this year, the priority should be the windows. And we did fill out the community development block grant, and as I said, we should ask for money. If we've received money for that building in the past because of, I guess, where it's located in town, being it's in that census block where it's low income, so it's that would be my plan, to go out to bid on windows, go out for first, we've hit some rough estimates and saw that the money should cover the window and perhaps one of the sides as far as re-siding, which I think the worst side at this point was the west side. I had spoke with Bob Martin recently, who had a little more input on it, just to find out what he had thought. He agreed that the siding should start to be replaced when the windows are done, the west side, for what that's worth. And that's where I'm at. I'm looking to advertise and go out to bid to replace the windows. And these would not just be the windows where you take the sashes out. It would be actually reinstated windows with the flange so that they're energy efficient. We had looked at Anderson Windows, by the way. Jimmy had done some of the preliminary looking at pricing, and as I said, we thought that we could probably still have some money left to decide on where I'm with the windows.
Matt, would you like, you can't do that, right, Nancy?
Capel, I just know there's no need for this.
Would you like to comment on that?
Let's take a big step back. First of all, the seventy-seven items that the ordinance firm came up with is not a definitive list. We're not oriented to that list. It's an important list. And it's the first step, one of many steps that need to be taken towards having a capital improvement plan for the town to actually debate and prioritize according to the priorities in ordinance. So, in my view, each and every one of our buildings has necessary core systems that have to be attended to. Wastewater and water being two of the most essential items. Phil didn't put it on his list, but it's on my list. And so, so far, actually, I have nothing but good news. So I advised for cesspool inspection or septic inspection at every single one of the town buildings. So the good news is Essex Library is in fantastic shape. So the septic works extremely well. The pump, it's a pump assisted system. The pump is properly alarmed. The alarm is functioning. Two thumbs up. We just had Fodden Beach done. Couldn't find the cesspool. It's been so long since anyone's actually paid attention to this issue in this town that nobody knew where the blooming cesspool was. So once we found it, the inspector popped a lid on it and said, my gosh, nobody has pumped this in twenty years. So we had a pump today. We ran two hundred feet of the water. We had a pump today. Brinnels and Senior Center are next. I actually don't know what to make of the Senior Center. We pump it, we have now pumped it seven times in the last fifteen, sixteen months. It's concerning. My hope is that it will pass, that all we have is just heavy use, and we just need to be on a more regular schedule. That's my hope, is that the cesspool still functions and that it's not going to fail. And so long as we have a plan to rectify the situation by 2020, we're fine. So we'll come back next year with a capital budget, I mean, if our septic system, a wired sewer connection. And we'll do the windows this year. Because after wastewater and water, you fix your roofs, right? And then you seal to the outside with windows and doors. So the Senior Center, I haven't been there in the winter. We've all been there in the winter. It's a sieve, even as well. I think the birds boost on the top of it to stay warm in the winter. So it is a priority. We do have available population that uses the building. My only concern is this. If the cesspool does not pass, then we are serving food at a congregate meal site, and we have knowledge that our cesspool doesn't pass. We might need to take more significant action. And the only item that would be in the budget is this thirty-two thousand dollars. Now, if we want to be rigid about it and say we can't touch it, we can only use it for the windows, that's what we're going to use it for. But we will be doing so with the knowledge that we're putting windows in a building that we probably shouldn't be using. So I don't really think that's a good thing. I don't want my name in the paper. I don't want anybody's name in the paper associated with that kind of expenditure for a building that might not pass a basic core function, or flush it and forget it. But, like I said, my hope is, if it does pass, we need a plan in place with wastewater district. Because we need to run, we can run with gravity, down from here, down to the bottom with the main interceptor on Bay Street. We'd be in a much better position than we are today, because then we'd have well sewer and a weather tight building. So let's just knock on something that's made out of wood. Now, I disagree with you. I think it is a priority. I have other priorities, too. Well, issue one. Okay, I was there this week. The Culligan system is running to drain. Okay, so there's no water in the building. We just put our firefighters on twenty-four hour shifts, so we're not going to have a viable source of water in the building. So we have a three hundred and fifteen foot deep well with the well pump sitting in the muck at the bottom of the line, pumping silt up through the filter and being clogged. The bladder tank, the bladder was blown. So we have preserving pressure in the bladder tank, and the water system is running to drain because there's so much sediment in the system it blocked ahead. These are the real issues facing the town and its buildings. And we need a capital improvement program that addresses these aggressively. But sometimes when I buck and chafe a little bit about picking just one item or two items here and there and saying, you know, we're just going to do it, is that we haven't had this conversation where we put it all together and say, well, this one's going to be more important, and this one's going to be next, and this one's going to be next. But this is high enough a priority. We'll take care of it. We'll go out to bid. I think we should do it. Eyes wide open, man, full well, but you stand with wastewater disposal at that building. Could you hear? So quickly, when you look at the possibility of, A, running sewer line all the way down to the trunk line down on the bottom, or pumping up, I guess, over to where the Spring Restaurant is to the manhole there. I mean, cost-wise, it's still cheaper to put a septic system in. Except for a couple of things. First of all, it may not be money.
May not be what?
May not be money. May not be the taxpayers' money. Maybe coming through a USDA grant or other things that you're able to do.
Yeah, well, that'd be-
Secondly, it is an option, because you have a manhole running either side of Main Street, a main road. So you can go from that park, and I guess you might need some pump to take you up to that manhole and go into your existing system. But it, just an advanced septic system on our Senior Center property would be a significant disruption to the way that place works. And it also may be extremely expensive. It would depend on your septic, and it's also depending on its gravity, and it's bottomless. Probably an undercurrent bottomless sand system, that's very expensive. So, I mean, all of these options are brought to you, councilman. I just wanted to flag for you that there are sometimes issues that I don't walk- I just wanted to flag for you that there are sometimes issues that I don't walk around without my short sleeve, because I don't want to embarrass people or put the town in a bad position, which is a position we may be in if the cesspool fails and we're using that site for convivial use.
The thing is, is the system-- I've actually seen-- it's a honeycomb system. It's huge.
Okay. I'm actually going-- we're off--
Way off.
Way off of where we are for the agenda item, so I just want to bring us back so we're not violating--
Should we wait to go out for bid until we find out if the septic is okay?
I would--
Why do we not just try to get a community development block grant, particularly when you have that issue behind you where the state is phasing out cesspools across the state? That way, we get the double. And the fact is, people went out and voted in confidence that we were going to continue to fix this building so it doesn't end up looking like Judson Street.
You can't, Joe. I'm not saying not to. I'm just saying to--
Well, it doesn't hurt to go out to bid and see what we're looking at for a price that maybe enough money--
No, I agree.
At least go out to bid and see what we're looking at.
Is that a motion to go out--
Yes, I'm motioning to go out to bid for the windows in the Senior Center.
Do I have a second? And then we'll have discussion, Brad.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Yeah. Madam President, I don't think we should be going out for bid. We don't know what's going to happen with that Senior Center. And to go out for bid right now, I just find it something that we shouldn't be doing.
It's next year's budget.
There's no money in this year's budget, anyway.
So, we wouldn't actually do it until--
Joe, I have the floor. Once that money is put into the Senior Center account, like they've said, we can transfer whatever we want.
It's capital.
It's a-- That's in capital. I'm sorry. Sorry.
But we may want to hold off if--
But we might want to hold off, because we don't know what's going to happen. Let's wait until we find out.
So, let's continue to allow water to pour into the walls over there and further deteriorate the building so it can maybe look like Judson Street. Or, we could start to do some repairs over there.
I-- Madam President, I have no problem taking a harder look at this. And I have no problem going out to bid. I just want to know what I'm voting on, and I'd prefer to have a scope of work or something prepared by the town administrator with our staffs, our maintenance staff, so that I know, instead of just going out to bid for replacement windows, it's a pretty open-ended scope of services.
Yeah.
Maybe come back in a couple of weeks with some recommendations on whoever-- I don't care who it is, but I don't just-- I just don't-- I'm not crazy about voting on, "Go do this generic thing and with no guidelines or understanding of what that will entail." Because you're talking, "Maybe it's going to-- maybe we'll have enough to do siding, maybe not, maybe..."
Well, we did some rough estimates. We thought--
I have a motion--
--
Estimates, so it's important to see what--
Well, I have a motion asking the idea of going out to bid and getting estimates.
How many windows, though?
It was 28. 20.
The only thing I have is one sentence that says, "Discussion and possible vote to go out to bid for replacement windows at the Senior Center." I have no backup whatsoever.
In the regular course of business, we made ready to go out to bid. We come with a council with all the specs and everything. And so, councilman, there's no intention not to do this. And I think that's why you wanted this to be on the agenda. Look, there's every intention to replace these windows, but we may get to a point where we have to do other things as well. That's, you know, that's just the nature of the beast.
Like--
I have a motion--
The cesspool, if it doesn't--
Let's move the vote, please.
I have a motion on the floor, too, to go out for bid to replace windows at the Senior Center. I have a second. All those in favor? Motion fails.
I mean, I'll make a motion that we refer the matter to the town administrator at his discretion in the next number of months to come back with a formal proposal.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? All right. Bids and requests for-- Recreation Commission request to award food and beverage vendor services to David Kirchner, LCC, Locovore, 468 West St. Melo Drive, Tivin, who just spoke to the gentleman a little while ago.
Which we've already done, right? We don't need to do this again.
We know. We know. We gave him a vet--
That has an authorized license.
So, now we have to give him the--
This is really where the contract--
So, do I have a motion?
Okay. I move that we award the food and beverage vendor services contract to David Kirchner, LLC, Locovore. We did that.
No, we didn't. We gave him a vet's license.
So, the history is, we went out to bid. Locovore was the only respondent. There is a desire to let this gentleman take a crack at this. A local startup business, it's a great idea. He's hitting all his targets in terms of the check list, so he's got his beverages and office room to name. We still have to award the bid to him so he can get the contract up. That's fine.
Also, I would make that subject to providing an insurance certificate. Currently, he's only provided a quotation for insurance.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? You have it. DPW, Gerat, Stephen, Lucy, request, I want to bid for attached listings. And I will never pronounce my name. It's a-- It's a minis?
Tunis.
Tunis. Concrete paving to low bidder PJ, Keen Company, 998 Reservoir Road, Londonburg, Mass, for $166,750 for attached listing. That's pretty--
Do we have to go through all of these individually? Yes.
Or can we just--
Take it as a whole.
Okay.
I would read them all onto the record, but you can take them all.
Road materials-- Road materials to lower-- low bidder, LB Corp., DBA, Tivin. Materials, H10 Fish Road, per attached listing. Road materials to lower bidder, AL. Al Construction Company, Florida, Mass, for Bang Run gravel, per attached listing.
Madam President, I have a problem with that C, road material, the lower bidder.
It's going to be H as well.
I know. Are we in litigation, L.I.A.?
Yes.
So, why are we wanting to bid?
Because it's a low bidder.
I have a problem with that.
Do we have to go with the lower bidder?
Why do we not go with the lower bidder? This is costing us money.
Yeah. Well-- Reason why we couldn't do business--
I would think we'd have to go with the low bidder, I'm not--
I will tell you, in other municipalities, that there has been determinations not to go with an individual or a corporation that--
Absolutely. It's ridiculous.
Is in current litigation.
It's ludicrous.
He's done here, too.
I'd pull him off.
I need a motion to reject.
I'll make a motion to reject C. Actually, I'm going to be on some.
Oh, yeah. And H.
H.
What are you intending to materials?
What are you intending to materials?
Oh, some side of it. It's not the--
No. Yes.
All right, so it's C and H. Sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, too. Let me check the bid. We're going to have money. Al Construction Company for C and H.
So, can I add a question? So, we're trying to show good faith in losing these lawsuits, and all the courts walk into mediation. The first thing we want to do is stick the guy in the eye who comes in with the low bid, trying to do business with the town.
Yes. They have a contractual session.
Oh, my God.
I don't have any problem doing business with--
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Opposed? I'm sorry. No, no.
You're rejecting--
No, no.
In favor of rejecting, opposed to rejecting.
Reject.
Okay. And that was three votes. Reject again?
Who's opposed?
Me.
Who opposed?
Who opposed to rejecting?
Right. I did a front-up to tell you the two. And I've been up 21 hours.
Yes. It was Jim J.
Okay, so the motion fails.
Joe?
Joe, yes, sir.
I'm going to go on. High-density power-- yeah. Pipe, HTPE, to low bidder, EJ Prescott, ink looking around for $10,466.90 per attached listing. Concrete block catch base instructors, to low bidder, Highway Concrete Pro Company Incorporated, Florida, Mass, at $3,245.00 for attached listing. Catch basin frames and gates to low bidder, Warwick, New Water, Warwick, Rhode Island, as per attached listing. Unmended gasoline and clear ultra diesel fuel to low and only bidder, Santa Berkeley, evaporated brickstone Connecticut, the price is $2.50 gasoline and $2.55 oil diesel. Daily Man from Comet, to low bidder, LL, AL, Al Construction Company Incorporated, Florida, Mass, at $5,050 per ton. Rock ceiling to low bidder, Seal Coating Incorporated, Braintree, Mass, for $0.27 per linear foot. Line painting to low bidder, Highway Safety Systems Incorporated, Rockland, Mass, at .0384 per linear foot. Human mental services, DPW Police Department, to low bidder, UniFirst Corp., Warwick, Rhode Island, for three-year contract, totaling $12,564.21.
I move that we approve and award all the bids per the attached listing as recited by Madam President.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Here we go. Wait a minute. DPW, Stephen, Blue, he requests, to advertise, to purchase or to work contract, to purchase new roadway sweeper, to MHQ, for $228,684.
I thank you, Madam Chairman. This is a follow-up on the sweeper that DPW has been pursuing. We have a 50% grant on the purchase price from D E M. We were looking at many ways of going out to bid. The one was to partner with a few communities. At that particular time, we had a junk sweeper working. We've had it for three weeks. It's been broken out five times, and now it's sitting in our yard. Every single day, I get the two to three calls from irate citizens saying, "Where's my tax money going when the roads are wrecked and they're not even swept?" So, to expedite the process, I'm recommending we use a MHQ. They're a company that runs-- that runs a-- that runs a bidding process for the Plymouth County-- Plymouth County Commissioners. They annually put out bid contracts for many, many, many different things, equipment and materials. Chief Blakey has bought his Cruisers the last few years from this company. The quota price I got from them is roughly $3,000 less than the price I believe we're going to be getting. There's only one distributor in the whole northeast area for Algen Pelican Sweepers located in Lister, Mass. So, that's where the sweeper's going to be coming from. There's only one distributor, whether we go out to bids with many towns, whether we go out singularly, or whether we purchase it through MHQ. It's the same company is going to be supplying it. And so, this particular price is a price that's coming off, basically, a contract that's a year old. Next year, I'm told, it's going to be going up $3,000 to match the price quote I got from the distributor a few months ago. So, I'm recommending we go ahead to expedite the purchase process and to secure the best price available that we go out and buy the sweeper right now. There's probably going to be a 10- to 14-week lag time by the time we place the order and get delivery. So, we're behind the eight with sweeping our streets right now.
Stephanie, do you advise that we can do this?
What's the financing structure?
That would have to work out with our treasurer.
Because we have--
It would be a five-- I imagine it'd be a five-year purchase.
And you've only $20,000 in that account.
Right.
So, where are you going to-- so where's the money coming from?
Well, it's a 50-50 grant.
It's a-- yeah, it's--
If you did it over five years, it's about $45,000 a year, based on 228.
I figure it's going to be roughly $17,000 short over the five-year period with our half of that grant, based on-- originally, I thought it was $200,000. When we met with the D E M and got the award, they had-- they said we had to have a vacuum-assisted sweeper, which sucks all the dirt up while it's sweeping, for air quality control. So, this is something we didn't anticipate. It added $35,000 to the cost. So, originally, the $200,000 estimate now is up to 228. Half of that's roughly $14,000 on our half over what we anticipated.
But we readjust the capital request next year to reflect that.
Right.
It's probably going to be closer to $23,000 or $25,000 a year rather than $20,000.
Well, it could be a six-year note. I don't know how the treasurer's going to set it up, but we're anticipating a five-year note for this.
Let's entertain the motion.
So, what is the request? Is it a request to either advertise or award the contract?
The request is to buy it outright, and if you don't like that idea, I'm requesting to start the advertising process. Move forward.
Okay, whatever it happens.
I'm sorry. Madam President, that MHQ is on the state bid list in Massachusetts.
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we authorize the purchase of a new roadway sweeper to MHQ, subject to the attached sheet and proper financing and approvals through the town administrator. Make sure the financing and the budget shakes out. Pardon me.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
As I understand, we have no open public forum. Oh, I thought I saw-- opposed, Peter? Open public forum for announcements, comments, and questions. As I understand this now-- town administrator items and announcements. Make it brief.
I know everybody wants it to be brief. The people who are interested in this issue will be able to fast-forward to the video, so I'm going to pretend I'm awake and give as quick a briefing as I can. The bottom line is this: The engineers who designed the sprinkler system for the new Tupidon Town Library designed an appropriate-sized sprinkler. It is the size sprinkler system that is necessary for the building of the size that was built. But there is insufficient pressure, water pressure, in the building to power that system. If they had built-- if they had specified the equipment necessary to take the pressure from the street and make the sprinkler system work, you would have a valve, which is a booster pump for the fire system. Now, after the fact, the fix for this problem that they've created is to install a fire pump. So, we've laid back to where we should have been. We are inconvenienced by their lack of diligence in matching the pressure at the hydrant to the pressure they specify in the system. Even a layman can understand this. You don't need to be an engineer. If sprinkler system was designed for 80 pounds of static pressure with 50 pounds residual, we only have 48 pounds of static pressure at the hydrant. So, long story short, the library opening, the soft opening, so to speak, has been delayed. At some point, as we begin to reconfigure the pipes, as the good news is, the mechanical room at the new library is more than large enough to take all the new equipment without creating a problem in that-- creating a problem in that mechanical room. There'll be a soft opening that will involve a fire watch. There will be times, if it is necessary, to support the sprinkler system in the building for the next three weeks, we could always send a pump, send a new engine, use the pumpers' pressure, and pressurize the system, and it'll work fine. The fire pump is an order we should take about three weeks, along with its control panel. So we have one residual item that we still need to work out, and that is backup power, because a fire pump can never be without power. And so we're going back and forth with the electrical code, with the NFPA code today, on whether or not this requires the installation of a generator as well as the fire pump. And that would appear to be the case. Bottom line is this, this is a mistake made by our engineers and by the fire suppression system company. It is on their dime. It is their problem. And legal counsel has advised we've already pulled the contracts and pulled the errors and emissions policies. We have sent all the necessary messages to the general contractor and all the subcontractors that we intend for this to be fixed at their expense. So it's only the inconvenience to the town that we're looking at. Very important fact. We will still get a building with the necessary things. What are we doing internally? In order to trigger the accountability, we're pulling the CO in the building, because the general contractor signed a contract with us that said he would deliver a building to the CO. We found that the conditions for a CO don't exist, therefore, he hasn't finished his contract. The contract is still open. I did not record the deed on the library. So the deed was here and it was not recorded. And that doesn't mean a whole heck of a lot, because you took a form of vote to accept it, but it has not been recorded. We create enough doubt in the minds of people. And lastly, I am still concerned, there is an internal process. I'm concerned about it, and I want to look into it and make sure that all our I's were dotted and all our T's crossed as we went through the inspection process. The building was built in Section 120, which means that our inspector's only job is to make sure that the building, that the system that was built is the system that was in the plans. That is true. The system that was specified for in the plans is the system that was built by the contractor. So now, I know exactly what I'm looking for, I know exactly who has it, and that he hasn't produced it yet. But there are three pressure tests. At the hydrant, there's the so-called underground test, where all the systems come in underground, and through the walls of the foundation, there should have been a pressure test done at that time. And then there's a pressure test done at each sprinkler, or each zone of the sprinkler system. The critical test is that underground test, because I want to know what they found for pressure once they were at that stage, because if they paid attention to what the pressure was at that point, they might have known to look at their design. And our inspectors would have known, it would have been flagged for them to look into it. So I have a whole day of interviews scheduled on Monday with all of our internal inspectors and everybody who saw that site, to get to the bottom of how exactly we went through this process and whether or not we followed the proper procedures. That's all I have to say about that issue, Madam President.
You just have a question.
As far as the external pressure, are we gonna be able to get away with an additional power line, or we're talking the generator, the diesel generator?
I think what we're determining today is that a generator might be our best solution, because natural grid will tell you that if we have a fire in that building, they're gonna cut power at the pole. They're not gonna leave a transformer, they're not gonna fish around inside the building that may be on fire and try to find a second switch. They're gonna cut the future. Power at the pole. And grid tells us that they would not be able to distinguish which three-phase service they need to cut and which one they can't cut. I got kind of a wise-ass comment, and I said, why don't you spray-paint one of them red, and it'll tell you which one's the fires? But the fact of the matter is, that is their line, and they're sticking to it. They would cut power at the pole, which means our best solution is to have a two-hour generator with its own independent fuel source that keeps the fire pump running in real conditions, even when we cut power at the pole. That's what I, I believe that is what the code says we have to do.
Yeah, I just, I just want to point out, it's an added cost for maintenance on the generator and everything else. I'm just, I've seen systems put in where they used diesel pumps for backup, so I'm wondering why we, I don't know if it's feasible, but they, instead of using a generator and electric pump, we had a diesel pump for backup.
Let's get to that level of detail.
Yeah, I just, I'm just thinking of costs to the town. I mean, it may be that the contractor's gonna put the system in, but in the end, the town is gonna pick up the cost for the maintenance, because it's not something you just put in and you're never doing it. It's gotta be inspected every year, it's gotta be maintained. But hopefully, it almost never runs. It still has to be maintained, though, that's the thing.
The only comment I'd like to make is, we did get an occupancy there, and we did hold a gala with a lot of people, and the sprinklers weren't working.
It was the toilets.
Oh, but they were. The toilets were.
Well, they had a pump in by then.
Yeah, so we're, we're looking at the vagaries of pressure in the North Tivon Fire District water system. And I think one of the things I've asked the fire chief to look at is, what authority does he have to require a pressure test at many different hydrant sites? Because I'm starting to get very nervous about this, and I notice a lot of my comments when it comes to carbon, anything else, no strip, always come back to water, because I personally need to be convinced that system has necessary integrity to make pressure and flow guarantees to virtually any purpose. So we did have a condition in which that sprinkler system passed its test, and subsequent use of the building, that was no longer true after just a couple of weeks. So that's another issue we get to the bottom of, but once again, involves the fire district and not a town function.
All right, thank you. Council announcements, comments, and questions? Does anyone have an announcement?
Yep. Just a few things from the Arts Council. This is the last week for the Wear in Tivon contest, to get your entries in. There's gonna be some nice prizes to local restaurants and to Arudis Dairy Farm Store. The answers will be posted next Sunday, and the drawing will be held at the Arts Council monthly meeting at 10 o'clock at Town Hall. I think that's June, June 1st. Also, there's an upcoming exhibit that will feature pets, the Pets of Tivon. That showing will run from July 6th through August 27th. Please get your pets prepared, the pictures, paintings, any stories of your pets, please get them prepared for that, the next showing of the Arts Council, for the July and August showing. And also, as part of that showing, at the Arts Reception, more details to follow, but on the Sunday, July 19th reception, there will be a Dash-Hang-Dash.
It has to be Mrs. Belladie.
I think this is the second annual Dash-Hang-Dash, but stay tuned for further information on that event. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I have one, Madam President, and it's just my obligatory reading of the list of vacancies on boards and commissions. We have, I'm not gonna read how many, but we have vacancies on the Arts Committee, Building Code of Appeals for a Contractor, Cemetery Commission, Conservation Commission, Historic Preservation Advisory Board, Historical Cemeteries Committee, Juvenile Hearing Board, Library Board Trustees, Open Space Commission, Recreation Commission, Recycling and Landfill Committee, Street Advisory Committee, Tree Commission, Economic Development Committee, Harbor Commission, the Housing Authority, Personnel Board, Planning Board, and Zoning Board. Applications would need to be back to you.
We're gonna be putting another ad in for group seats.
Summer, so, yeah, okay.
Any further council announcements? Tom Clark?
The only thing I have is, at the council meeting, I wasn't present at, I think it was March 27th, Tricia Hilton had put an item on about the sign, the LED control signs, lights, and the motion was just that the clerk should schedule. So I just want to make it known that we are going to schedule that public hearing for June 22nd, provided I get the ad in by 10 o'clock tomorrow morning, if not July 7th. I'm giving myself backup days.
Okay. Bye. Thank you.
So it's gonna be July?
It's gonna be July 7th.
Anything further, Nancy?
I don't have anything, thank you.
I move that we go into closed executive session pursuant to the Island General rule, Section 4246-585, where disposition of real property industrial property is...
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Mr. Souza?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Mr. Melo?
Aye.
David Derris, aye. Mr. Shabbat?
Aye.
We're in staying closed executive session pursuant to Section 4246-582, Collective Bogdanin, IB, Pino.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Mr. Souza?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Melo?
Aye.
Mr. Derris, aye. Mr. Shabbat?
Aye.
I abstain.
And staying closed executive session pursuant to Section 4246-582, where solicitors review of pending lawsuits.
Second.
Mr. Souza? Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Melo?
Aye.
Mr. Melo?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah. Executive session.